Hello, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission. This is a special meeting this night for Wednesday, December 2nd. And Mr. Paulson, would you please call the role?
Yes, thank you, Chair Birch. Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Vice Chair Badami?
Here.
And Chair Birch?
Here. Would you all please stand and join Commissioner Hanson in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any written communications this evening?
We do. We have a desk item for item number two, the schedule, and also for item number three.
Have all the commissioners had a chance to review the desk items?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Are there any requested continuance this evening? I don't believe so.
There are not.
Okay. In addition to their service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Do we have any reports tonight? No? Great. "The Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages active participation in the public process, which is a cornerstone of democracy and essential to the Planning Commission conducting its business on behalf of the town council and citizens of the town. There are several ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. Written communications about agenda items submitted to the staff prior to the meetings are always very insightful and helpful. And at the meetings of the commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic which is not on the agenda, and any member of the public may speak during the public hearing of any agendaized items. If you are going to speak tonight, I'm going to ask that you please make sure you fill out a speaker card. They're located in the benches in front of you. Make sure that you print your name and which item you'd like to speak on. If you do come up tonight, please make sure you pull the microphone close to you, state your name clearly, and you will be limited to three minutes." This is the verbal portion of our meeting, however, I don't see that we have any cards for any items not on the agenda unless someone's going to surprise me? No? All right. Well, then, I'm going to move on to items number one and two, consent items. Item number one is approval of the meeting minutes for November 11th, and item number two is for the 2016 meeting schedule. Would anyone like to make a motion on the consent? Commissioner Badami?
I move to approve the consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes from November 11th, 2015. Item number two, adopting the 2016 Planning Commission meeting schedule with the correction made in the desk item presented to us tonight.
Great. Do we have a second? Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that.
All right. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passes unanimously. So, we will now consider item number three. Item number three is a public hearing to consider adoption of amendments to Chapter Two, Construing Analysis and Site Selection, and Chapter Five, Architectural Design of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. Are there any disclosures by any commissioners concerning this item? Mr. Paulson, I understand you're going to be giving us the report.
Yes, I have a brief report this evening. So, tonight, as mentioned, we're here to continue the discussion relating to visibility methodology and light reflective value for colors for the hillside. This was last discussed at a study session on October 21st where the Planning Commission asked a number of questions and then asked staff to specifically respond to questions that were included in the methodology document that were submitted by -- that was submitted by Dr. Weissman and Ms. Quintana. Additionally, the commission requested information or additional information regarding light reflective value. So, both of those issues have been addressed in the staff report, and we're here to answer any further questions or go through any other documentation that you have. Staff also provided four questions regarding visibility methodology and four questions regarding the LRV, just to get some input or to allow the commission to discuss those specific items as they're going through. I imagine, in the matter, of course, of the discussion, that most of those are going to be touched on anyway, but we wanted to put those in the staff report. So, as mentioned before, there is a desk item for this matter, and we are available to answer questions.
Does anyone have any questions of staff about the staff report or procedures? Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, I do. The questions are in the staff report for this evening. So, on page ... Correct. (inaudible) I'm sorry. Okay, they didn't catch that. All right. I have a housekeeping, and I've read this twice, or I read it more than twice, and I wanted to bring it up to staff because, and it has to do with two sentences, and I'll tell you where they are. One is in the September 23rd staff report on page four. It talks about exterior material colors for homes, with the exception of homes with any elevations, that is more than 25 percent visible from the viewing platforms may, blah, blah, blah. But then, Chapter Two, Section One, page 14 of the one of the of your staff report, do you have that in front of you? It says, "A visible home defined as a single-family residence where 25 percent or more of an elevation can be seen." So, I'm reading the 25 percent as different in both of those, both of those, you know, these points.
So, we can do a, we can do some wordsmithing and make sure that those, that the language in both of those sections mirror or as close as possible to each other.
Thank you. Because otherwise, it is a little confusing. All right. Thank you very much. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Commissioner Hanson?
I had a question for the history of one of the criteria in the guidelines, and my question was, it was relative to the different approaches to the view analysis. And if I understood it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, that if, if it is more than in today's standards, if it's more than 25 percent visible, then the height has to be restricted to 18 feet instead of 25? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep. Okay, so, what I wondered was, there was a comment in the staff report about, you know, a smaller house with an 18-foot elevation would be in compliance because they're already at 18 feet. So, then, is it really, what was the history behind deciding on 18 feet as a height criteria? Because you'd still see 18 feet from the viewing platform or a portion of that. And so, I wondered what was behind that, because we hadn't talked about that before, and I, and that seemed to be the only corrective action for any, whatever the viewing criteria is set, is that the height would have to be reduced by seven feet.
So, we don't have that handy. I believe there'll be speakers tonight that may be able to shed some light on that, that we're on the Hillside Development Guidelines and Standards Committee. I think the point was that the town code, if you read the town code, it allows actually 30 feet for hillside residential. However, when the guidelines were adopted, they were adopted with a height of 25 feet. And in looking through the visibility analysis, I would imagine that they assume that if something was going to be visible, that they wanted it to be a single-story, and so 18 feet is a fairly common single-story house at this point.
Any other questions? No? All right. We're now going to open the public portion of the public hearing and give anyone who would like to speak tonight three minutes to address the commission. If anyone has not turned in a card, please do so. The first card I have is Dennis Rosari. Is that correct? Please make sure you state your name and pull that microphone close so we can hear you clearly.
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm Dennis Rosari, and I represent Davidon Homes. Appreciate the opportunity once again to speak to you about this. Staff had raised a number of questions, and I first would like to respond to those. The current standard on the hillside, hillside design standards and guidelines was for 25 percent, as we've all been discussing. It's not ambiguous. It's very well-defined. It works. It has worked for the city for 12-plus years. It's being contested with the result of what Davidon's been doing with the Highlands Development, but even with that, it's a discretionary approval that remains your purview to approve or deny. So, I think you have the ability to override that regardless of what is amended or how the language is amended. Any application goes before the design review, can be appealed up to commission, can be appealed up to council. There's three opportunities despite what the standards say or guidelines say that allow you the purview to make a decision and make a decision on that. The hillside design standards and guidelines allow for homes to be a maximum of 18 feet high if they're over 25 percent visibility. Commissioner Talisfor just raised that question. So, that home can be 100 percent visibility on that hillside if it exceeds the 25 percent. We're spending a lot of time, have been spending a lot of time, on reducing the visibility of these homes based on whether the trees screen them or not, but there's always that alternative, that this, these houses can drop down to 18 feet in height and be 100 percent visible based on the design standards and guidelines. The town's arborist is an independent consultant to the city. They aren't retained by Davidon Homes or any applicant. They're retained by the city. The applicant ends up paying their bill. So, they are an appropriate independent consultant to the city to make decisions and make determinations on the stature of the tree, the health of the tree, the vigor of the tree, and they should be used, I believe, to determine whether that tree can qualify for screening characteristics or not. Staff raised questions, as was mentioned prior to opening the public hearing, that they were looking for feedback on. Deed restrictions are doable. They are very doable, and we would support that for mitigation tree planting. The town arborist, as I mentioned, should be the determining consultant to determine the character of the tree, whether it's poor, fair, or healthy, very quick, and use that The canopy should be, sparse canopy should still be allowed for screening. Screening doesn't mean cloaking. It doesn't mean it's going to be invisible. When you look out your window and you have a screen, you see through it. These houses are going to be, or a house is going to be visible to some degree. It is screening. So, if anything, rather than deleting definitions in the glossary, add a definition for screening. What is the intent of screening? We believe that, we believe it works. It should continue to work with the current guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. The next card that I have is for David Weissman.
I'd like to make two quick points.
I'm going to interrupt you before they start your time. You need to state your name for the record, please.
David Weissman, sorry. Two points, if I may. Since the last time that we discussed this issue and Lee Quintana and I submitted a draft ordinance, I have come across new information, which is in Exhibit Eight in your packet. I believe the matrix presented in Exhibit Eight could be substituted for the narrative of which trees should and should not be counted as screening that is presented on page two of the sample draft ordinance that Lee Quintana and I sent you for the prior study session. This matrix has the advantage of treating the two different species of our hillside oak trees differently since they do respond differently to disturbance. I would recommend that trees given an in-between classification by the consulting arborist, for example, a tree graded as poor/fair, be treated as poor in the matrix since this gives the benefit of the doubt to the hillside visibility standards and not to the developer. Secondly, I want, I want to put forth one last appeal for peer review for the visibility calculations, if I can use a story to illustrate. In 1989, a group of scientists in Utah promised the ultimate solution to the world's energy crisis, cold fusion. People started talking Nobel Prize despite the seeming violation of the law of thermodynamics. But it wasn't until the Utah group actually published their methodologies that others could find errors in their experiment. That is the power of peer review. For our purposes here tonight, peer review is not staff looking over numbers submitted by an applicant and saying that all looks okay. It is an outside firm without potential conflicts of interest doing an independent analysis using their own derived numbers and coming to their own conclusions. Now, Davidon has raised the specter of these extra costs to a developer interested in building a single house. But don't be persuaded by these fears. Peer review would only be needed in unusual cases, a situation indeed very rare according to staff. To cite an actual example of why peer review is sometimes necessary, at past town meetings, Davidon has merely stated that they don't count trees that are to be removed in the visibility calculations. But nowhere does the architectural firm actually doing the calculations explain their specific methodologies for removing trees from screening included in their lengthy letter of April 30th, 2015. So, why should we believe them without concrete evidence? For the Highlands project, we still don't know how the trees that will be removed for construction have been reviewed, have been removed from the visibility analysis. We have only Davidon telling us that they were. But don't, but don't tell me that, don't tell me that you did it. Show me how you did it and the results both before and after. That's transparency.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? No? Thank you. The next card I have is Steve Abs.
Hi, good evening. I'm Steve Abs with Davidon Homes. I have submitted a, which Joel is passing out, a desk item here. Basically, what I've done is taken Mr. Weissman and Ms. Quintana's proposed methodology and point by point gave a applicant's, applicant's perspective on, on how we don't agree with the language. We find that this proposed methodology is not only unfair to an applicant, it's very ambiguous, and, and in fact, it lacks expert input and opinion. In fact, I'm kind of disappointed that Ms. Debbie Ellis is not here, but the experts that the town has to rely on, on a document like this is community development and planning and, and the town consulting architect, or arborist. Debbie actually had some great testimony last, last hearing that was very useful, and I thought, and again, I think it's disappointing that she's not involved in this conversation. But it's very important, as you read through my comments there, that, that the current guidelines, the way they're set up, and the current methodology actually relies on the architect, the, the arborist comments as far as each tree. Each tree is different. Each lot is different. Each, each viewing platform has different distances from each applicant, for each application. So, to apply certain, certain criteria to all is, doesn't necessarily work in this situation. And that's in respect to, you know, asking the question if a deciduous tree or a sparse tree or defoliated tree should be used for screening. Every tree is different. Every, you know, canopy is different, it has different structure. So, that's one point I want to make. Mr. Kane had put it, put forward a desk item. He's, he's basically recommending, he's not here to defend himself, but that no vegetation should be used for screening. And, and that absolutely, to me, with all due respect, makes no sense. Then, in that case, if you have a downsloping lot, you have 100 percent visibility every single time. That's what, that's what visibility is screened by, is by, is by the trees. There's no other, there's nothing else that can screen it besides the trees. And the other point I want to bring up, and I didn't get it in the staff report as far as a question that needs to be discussed, is being able to plant screened trees. Again, the past mayor, Mayor Wasserman, and Councilperson McNutt publicly stated that trees should be used for screening. And with the fact that a deed restriction's possible, it just seems like it's a win-win for everybody, the fact that it'll mitigate viewing and it will replenish the oak woodland that is depleting according to Debbie Ellis.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you to hold on a minute. Can we, this is a desk item that then came up in his discussion. Can we take a moment to review this before we ask questions? Because...
Yes.
Okay. Would you guys like to take a minute to look at this prior to questions? Mr. O'Donnell?
I'm concerned. It looks like a lot of work went into this, but it, because a lot of work went into it, taking five minutes or 10 minutes now, I don't think's going to do it. And I guess, the question I was going to ask is, why are we getting it now? That's fine. They can do that. But it looks like a lot of work went into this, and work may be good. I don't know. But I'll tell you right away that I won't be able to digest this in five or 10 minutes. Well, no, I'm not asking you a question. So, but, so if the chair wants to take time, that's fine, but I can tell you right now, I will not feel like I am familiar with this in any reasonable time this evening. And so, the only question in my mind is if somebody submits something the absolute last moment, if in fact, it's the pleasure of this commission, once again, not to reach a decision, then we can do that, but I, I'm very disappointed that we got this much material at this late moment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Commissioner Badami, you had your hand up?
I would be in agreement with that. There's a lot of material to absorb, and we need to make an informed decision, and we can't get through this in five minutes.
Okay. Well, does anyone then have any questions of the speaker at this time? Commissioner O'Donnell?
The question, the question I have is, why did you deliver it to us at essentially 7:15 this evening?
That has been done by Mr. Weissman and Ms. Quintana at prior hearings, and you guys have reviewed that document and asked questions regarding that specific document. It's been, it's been, I don't know if it was Chairman, Chairman Person Birch or Badami that actually said that you guys encourage, encourage written documentation up, up to the hearing. And honestly, it is a lot of work, but if you go through it, and this is, if this is a methodology that, that planning commission is considering, it's just a, it's a point by point. It looks like a lot of information, but they're just, just little, little bullet points that, that rebut what, what this language has. So, I mean, if this is something that, that, if that methodology, in fact, I think there's maybe some confusion, that methodology is not what staff is proposing. It is methodology that Ms. Quintana and Mr. Weissman are proposing. Staff's, staff's recommendations for methodology is completely different. If, if you are considering that methodology, as you go down that, and if there's recommendations made for this methodology, my little bullet point, it takes one second to read each, each item for each of those points.
My question was...
I apologize for submitting it late.
Yeah, my question was simply, why did you wait until 7:15 to give it to us? You're correct. Everybody seems to abuse that, that position, but everybody takes the risk that their, what may be cogent points will not be as well-received or as understood if they got it in so we could read it. But that's your risk, not ours.
And again, I, from the prior hearings, it's, it, to me, and it's a, it was a miscalculation on my part then, but it seems like, in the prior hearings, when Mr. Weissman and Ms. Quintana hand that U document, it gets your immediate attention. And, and that, that was my miscalculation. I assumed that, you know, I had submitted an October 16th, 12-page letter, that, that there's no acknowledgement in this staff report that we even supplied that letter to you guys. I don't know if you guys have even read that. And I had called Joel, Joel on that earlier this week and said, why, why is our document not even included in this, in the staff report? Why is Davidon not even included in the staff report as if we didn't even exist and showed up to, to the hearings? So, there's a little, little bit frustration in the fact that I feel, I feel, especially in the staff report, it's, it's leaning more to Ms. Quintana, Mr. Weissman's point of view when it should be equally weighed on all citizens of Los Gatos, all applicants of Los Gatos. I don't think we're getting that fair shake.
Let me just say this, and I, I don't direct this just at you, but I think if you put yourself, or if anybody puts themselves in the position of a commissioner, and they hand them a good document at 7:15 on the evening of the hearing, the limitations of the human mind being what it is, you take a risk that your, your points will not be fully understood. So, all I'm saying, and it's not directed at you...
Understood.
And I agree with you, that this position is often done, but everybody that does that takes the risk that instead of studying it, we're going to have to act quickly, and that's not the preferred way to do it, in my book.
Understand. And I actually had asked Joel to hand it out prior to the meeting, and he did not.
Commissioner Badami?
Mr. Abs, I'd like to point out that we do have in our possession a letter from you dated October 16th regarding the visual analysis methodology. So, I'm going to hope that's the one that...
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that being acknowledged, and I appreciate that it be acknowledged that we are putting as much time and effort as Mr. Weissman and Ms. Quintana.
Thank you. Okay. So, then, to step in here, based on history, we have often been given items at the dais, and I know that it isn't everybody's favorite, but historically, we've given that about two or three minutes for people to review. Whether you choose to review it or not is completely your choice, but I'm going to ask if we can just have a couple of minutes for us to flip through, see if there's anything that jumps out that any commissioners would like to question. I know this isn't a lot of time, but do you guys need another minute or so? It's a lot to absorb. Okay. Of course. Of course. All right. I'm going to ask if my fellow commissioners have any questions of the speaker concerning the document in front of us. I do know it was a lot. Does anyone have any questions on this? Okay. No? Thank you.
Thank you for your time. It was not my intention to, to do that, and duly noted, won't happen again. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Keeney.
Thank you, Commissioner Burch, and members of the commission. My name is Michael Keeney. I'm with Summer Hill Homes, and I am the project manager for our 17-unit project on Prospect Road. I've spent a lot of time over the last year talking to neighbors about construction at the site and the homes that we are proposing. They have all expressed a desire for high-quality architecture that integrates into the neighborhood. Three of them have submitted letters to the town requesting that the LRV averaging methodology be allowed for all homes in the hillside area. The LRV averaging methodology takes the square footage of each elevation and requires that an applicant calculate the percentage of the square footage that is allocated to each color used. This creates an average that is weighted based on the colors used and how much they are used on each elevation. This method is completely quantifiable and eliminates the opportunity for an applicant to circumvent the goals of the LRV policy under the previous staff interpretation. It will result in higher-quality architecture that integrates into the hillside environment and the existing neighborhood. We are not opposed to the idea of including an LRV cap, but we feel it's important that the cap be high enough to maintain the goal of creating high-quality architecture. If the cap is too low, you could have a scenario where a home that has predominantly dark colors with a small amount of light-colored trim had a lower LRV average than a home that used more colors from the middle of the spectrum. It effectively squeezed people into kind of the, the middle colors because there's less of an advantage to creating a contrast with a really dark shade. So I think there's a benefit to having a little more flexibility, and that the averaging kind of achieves the goal that you're trying to get to of keeping anything from being too far up the color spectrum. I'm available to answer any questions you have, and we also have our architect here this evening who's going to speak a little more in the direction of, of kind of where on the spectrum those colors fall and kind of help provide some information on what some of those styles are and how they would benefit the town as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Hanson.
I think you started to go there. In your opinion, if there were an LRV averaging cap or maximum LRV value in, that could be allowed, what would you recommend?
I'm, I'm going to let our architect, Dan Hale, answer that because he's got some palettes and some different things that'll provide some visual characterization of that. That kind of helps put it in context.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Talusfor.
Right. So my question is, when, when you read something, one of the policies or the guys, actually the guideline here, when it says that exterior material colors, I am sure you're familiar with the new language that's been proposed.
Yeah, I think, so-
So, wait a minute. I'm done. Here's the question. So just that, I wanted to make sure you were familiar with it. So when it says at the end of the sentence, "and shall blend with the natural vegetation," what does that mean to you?
You're talking about the language in the existing guidelines.
And the proposed ones?
Well, I think the previous guidelines had a couple of things that were all pointed towards having homes that integrated into the hillside, and they, they encouraged the use of natural materials, stone and wood. And I think that's part of the reason staff, for years, interpreted those as being exempt because, because they looked like part of the environment, so it's not as important that they not be reflecting a lot of light, like a window or a really light-colored home. So I think that's part of the benefit of, of the averaging alternative, is that you're, you're taking, you're making an effort to show what that natural materials reflectivity would be, but you're also not penalizing someone for using it on, on the home if, just because it's a little bit lighter than an LRV of 30, which is a pretty dark shade you'll see when Dan shows some colored chips. So, so I guess, I'm not sure if your, your question is what's, what's the natural setting? I mean, it could be, it could be stumps, it could be brown, it could be light-colored stone, it could be limestone.
But how does that, but how do you, how do you address that? When it, and the sentence ends with, "and blend with the natural vegetation," I mean, do you have conflict with that, is my, I, maybe that's a better way of asking the question?
To my mind, the, the guideline's primary goal, as it relates to the light reflectivity, was to prevent seeing reflections and seeing starkly colored homes on the hillside from the valley floor. When you're driving through a hillside neighborhood, you know, kind of down in some of the valleys and around, and you're, you're getting into darker areas as it is, in some cases, a lot of the houses up there that I think really look great, don't comply. They're lighter-colored houses, but they're in locations where they fit into the environment because they're using a balance of materials and stone and stucco and clay tiles and all kinds of different things, and it's not as important that they fit perfectly there. It's that you don't want to see them from the valley floor and feel like you're looking up at the Oakland Hills or, or something where they're really standing out and they don't look like they belong.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you. The next card I have is for Lee Quintana.
Lee Quintana, Five Palm Avenue. Just like to start with one comment on the color averaging. It's never been clear to me, so I would ask if, if you or staff could clarify, when you're talking about color averaging, are you including both the roof, the roof structure and the side elevations, or are those determined separately? Because it seems like roofs have much more of an impact on visibility if they're at low, high reflectivity. I really only have a couple of comments on the rest of it. The town has a deadline for desk items to ensure that the commissioner, the council can have adequate time to, to review them because they receive them ahead of time. It's true that sometimes in response to a desk item, somebody would submit something late, but it is, like Ms. Beatty even said, taking a chance. The comments that Dave Weisman and I have submitted have all been submitted in time to appear as a desk item, to give you time to read them. In addition, I have two other comments that have to do with the fact that Joel and Dave and I had a discussion on Tuesday, and looking at what little bit, I'm a slow reader, so what, looking at what little bit I could read of this, some of the issues that were brought up, we did discuss. And I think Dave and I would be very happy to meet with Davidon and discuss this and maybe come up with some compromises. And lastly, I want to make a comment on the 25% and on vantage points versus viewing platforms. You know, basically, the objectives and goals of the hillside design guidelines was to minimize the visibility of homes in the hillside, including from the valley floor. Somehow, oops, viewing platforms became used as from the valley floor, and other vantage points were sort of lost in the translation. I think there should be one term used for both, and maybe it should be viewing platforms within the valley, hillside and the valley floor, or whatever. But I think we make a distinction that was never intended. And I'm out of time unless you have questions.
Commissioner Badami.
Ms. Quintana, you were on the committee that developed the hillside development standards and guidelines, correct?
That's correct.
So I'm, I'm really bothered by this 25% where it came from, and I can't get a, a reason behind it other than that it was thrown in at the last minute. Is there any town records that can tell us the discussion that went into that 25%? And I will look to staff for that, and I will also look to you to answer that, if you remember that from any of the discussion.
My recollection is that there was an ad hoc committee of the planning commission, I believe, to go over some issues that had been raised at the public hearing of the draft for the hillside. And I was appointed to that committee. However, we were told that there were going to be four meetings, and we couldn't miss any of them. And when the meeting schedule came out, I found that I was on vacation for one of the meetings. So I was replaced by another commissioner who missed one of the meetings. So my answer to you is that, two, had I been on that, in that discussion, I probably would have wanted some very good reasons for 25%. And two, I don't know where it came from. It wasn't there in the final draft before that meeting.
Does, you know, I will look to you, staff. It may be a little late in the game to retrieve that information, but is there any documentation, any transcripts, or any discussion on record that told us how they derived the 25% visibility cutoff?
Not that staff's aware of, and if it would have been part of an ad hoc process, there for sure would not have been verbatim minutes, and there probably wouldn't have been any minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson.
Commissioner Hanson.
So I had a question for Ms. Quintana. It was about the vantage point versus the viewing platform. What I was trying to understand was what, what, what you're trying to get of it, it, other than seeing things from the valley floor, where would a vantage point be that wasn't on the valley floor? Whether it was the existing viewing platforms or down the street or whatever, where, where would a vantage point example be that's not down at the street level?
Well, I can, I can, I'm not sure I can answer that exactly. I think that's something that would have to be determined as each project came in so that you would have, you would know where the project was located and know the developments that were around it and the streets that were around it and the areas that could be visible, that it could be visible from. One example that I can think of, which is just one example, when the Highlands, after the Highlands was approved, there was an ANS for, it may have involved a subdivision too, I don't know, for two homes or one home in the area behind the Highlands, I think on Drysdale or Greenwood Terrace or, or something up there. Staff can probably remember the street names better than I can. And that applicant was required to reduce the height of the house because it would be visible from one of the lots in Highlands. So that's one example. Could be if you did a development along Shannon Road, and you could see numerous houses from Shannon Road, or some of the major streets in the hillsides. I mean, it was never, it was never specifically determined, but the hillside design guidelines themselves in the very first portion of it do say views from the, views of the hillsides including from the valley floor, almost as if they were emphasizing views within the hillsides more than the valley floor, and we flipped it around, although I think both are equal, in my opinion. And the, and, and the use of platforms versus vantage points, I think it was all vantage points to begin with, and the director of planning came up with this platform idea, and I think our initial response is we sort of laughed because we thought there was actually going to be a platform built that you stood on to view.
Okay. I, I, I think I understand more about where you're coming from, but, okay, isn't, isn't it true that any house in the hillside, though, would be visible from some other place, if not in their own neighborhood? I mean, because there has to be some kind of line where you draw it and, and say, you know-
Sure, there's this question that has to be used, but if the intent is to maintain the rural open feeling of the hillside, that's part of what I would assume would be taken into consideration in making that kind of a decision of whether it needs to be addressed or not.
Commissioner Talusfor, did you have a question? You had your hand up earlier.
Well, I think it was you wanted to address two things and-
It was the 25%.
It was the 25%.
Yeah, I, I don't understand that, and I don't understand saying that if you reduce the house size, height from 25 to 18 feet, the house would still be 100% visible, because in many cases, a good portion of the part of the house that's visible is the roof line or the roof. And, you know, the, the size of the house that's allowed is, our previous planning director, many directors back, used the word nominal. The, the FAR is nominal, which means that it's not a fixed number. And if that size of house is going to cause a house to be prominently visible, then perhaps the solution is a smaller house. It's just, I shouldn't be opening.
So you, I mean, you, you and Dr. Weisman put in a tremendous amount of work on these documents, and there's a lot that so, that is, I, you know, would hope that we pay attention to. There's a lot there. But let me ask you about if, so if you were going to, you know, draw up the, draw up the new visibility from the hillsides, what would, would you even include a percentage or not?
I wouldn't. No. My opinion, no. I, I wouldn't include a percentage.
Because?
Because if it's visible, it's visible. And, and I was shocked when I went to the glossary and, and found the definition for visible in the glossary as being 25% visible, because visible to me is you can see it. And that definition also went in at the very end of the process. So when a person reads the rest of the document, unless they happen to flip to the, I mean, 20, visible is visible. If you can see it, you can see it. And if we want to minimize visibility, the way to do it is in the design and, and the sighting and the size.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? No? Thank you. I don't have any other speaker card. Oh, I do. I'm sorry. Dan Hale. I'm so sorry. Got buried under a piece of paper, Mr. Hale. I apologize.
I do have a handout.
Make sure you pull the microphone to you. Yeah, yeah. Please give us a minute to get this.
So good evening. Dan Hale with Hale Jones Architects.
Mr. Hale, I'm going to ask you to give us just one second to get this passed out.
Okay, sorry.
So we also have these. I'd like my commissioners to please note that if you flip it over, the LRV percentage is on the back of these cards. is on the back of these cards. You don't want to look at this first? Okay. All right, Mr. Hale, go ahead.
Good evening. Dan Hale with Hunt Hale Jones Architects. As Mike Keeney mentioned, I am working with Summer Hill. I am working with Summer Hill as their architect on the Sorellis project. As their architect, I'm very familiar with trying to come up with color schemes that have an LRV maximum 30 percent. It's extremely challenging. The color, actual color samples that I passed out, I was going to have you pay attention to the bottom three colors, and the top color in particular. With a maximum of 30 percent, you're limited to the bottom three colors, to provide interest and character to the architecture. And I find that with the 30 percent maximum, you really end up with dark, kind of dreary, uninspired elevations. So I do have a couple of examples to show you what averaging can give you to enhance the architecture in your town, not just for our particular project. On the first page, there are two examples of traditional architecture. What I'd like to point out is, I think the contrasting colors provides interest in detail and accentuates the architectural design. Now, in these two homes, the body colors are still higher than 30, but it's the point of having some contrasting colors. You can look at the gable end details, you can look at the window boxes, you can look at the porch railings, the masonry used. All the contrast provides interest to the architecture, enhances the architectural design. On the next page, the house on the lower left, actually, I think would meet the averaging, excuse me, lower right, would meet the averaging idea in this town. You have a dark body color, but using a lighter trim color provides some interest and accentuate the architectural details, the corbels, the window boxes, the columns on the front. This home also has a darker masonry base that I think would fit. But masonry is not all equal. Many architectural styles use precast trim, around windows, around doors, around columns. Precast trim is meant to be stone. Stone is a lighter natural color, like a gray or a tan. So having that come into an LRV of 30, you'd end up painting it. And it's really historically not an appropriate way to use that type of material. The next page shows two additional houses. One on the right-hand side has real cedar shingle siding with a natural stain and white trim. The cedar siding, although beautiful, doesn't meet LRV 30. So you're limiting the amount of natural materials you can use. But you can have nice-looking homes. The home on the left is a real wood house with a darker stain on the shingles, but lighter trim. The lighter trim, again, I think enhances the architecture. So I'm in support of the LRV averaging. I think for the town, it provides better architectural design for home builders, architects, homeowners, and really maintains the character of the history of your town much better than a maximum of 30.
All right. Thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions to the Speaker? Commissioner O'Donnell, then Commissioner Hanson?
I'm curious about averaging insofar as the roof is concerned. Is it your understanding, or position, that the roof should be included in the averaging?
We've talked about this internally, in working on the Sorellis project in particular. I do think that the roof can be taken separately, and you can look at just the vertical wall planes. The roof should not be any, I'm okay with a maximum of 30 on the roof. And then you take each horizontal plane of the house, and the material used there, and average those. I think you can create nice architecture. Along with averaging, if I may continue the question, when I mentioned the maximum LRV that might be used, if there's a limit on it, my personal opinion is something in the order of 75. That sounds high, but on the swatches that I passed out, the top color is 75. You get a sense of the brightness of that. So anything above 75, what you really exclude are bright whites, but it gives you a chance to use some color and lighter trim. And again, you still have to average to 30.
Can I ask you?
Yes, please.
Looking at the small colors that you gave us, where would 75 fit in this six or so?
It's the top, the top one is 75.
Okay.
If it hasn't been, the lightest color there, if it hasn't been mixed up, is 75.
All right, thank you.
Did you have a question, Commissioner Hanson? Did I see your hand up?
He answered my question, and it was also clear, after I looked at the pages, that he had up to 75. That was my guess.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Talisfor?
So when you are choosing colors for a home, you can do variations of the same color, correct? And that would enhance, and perhaps make certain elements stand out if you needed to, but they could also blend in with the hillsides, or whatever the natural terrain is, if you're in the hillsides. Now, we're talking about the hillsides. We're not talking about, you know, in our valley floor here. So this is all about hillsides?
Understood.
Okay. So the question I asked, yeah, you know the question.
One of the reasons I passed out those color swatches is to have a real visual about what are your, what are your choices that are 30? So if you kind of want to have complementary colors, they're going to be just one tone or two off. And once you apply that on a house, it just becomes all blended in. And I find it very uninspiring, and it does not complement typically the architectural style. I think even your architectural consultant, Larry Cannon, in the past, has supported the idea of averaging, supported the idea of being able to enhance good architectural design with a little bit of color contrast.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Hale.
Thank you.
All right. Now, I don't have any additional speaker cards, so unless we need to have any other discussion, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing, and ask my fellow commissioners if they have any questions of staff, any discussion, or want to make any kind of recommendation to the council. Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'd like to separate this out and attempt a motion with the color averaging. So I'll throw it out there and see what kind of comments I might get from my commissioners. But I would move to forward a recommendation to Town Council to consider adoption of amendments to Chapter Five, Architectural Design of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. I can make the required findings for CEQA. The recommendation would be staff's proposed amendment on Page Four of the staff report dated October 21, 2015, with the added language that the roof material shall be calculated separately, and shall not exceed a maximum light reflectivity value of 30.
All right. Do we have any questions or discussions before we vote? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I guess where I am is, there are so many issues that we've talked about. I had hoped that we might talk about the three or four issues that staff has enumerated before breaking them up into a motion. So I just add that, obviously, if you get a second, we can vote on it, but I'm just wondering if you would consider discussion. I've had real trouble dealing with all these issues, and I was hopeful that some conversation among ourselves would certainly help me to understand it better.
I would be happy to withdraw the motion. I have a lot of concerns as well, but most of them have to do with the visibility analysis. But most certainly, I'd be happy to withdraw the motion at this time.
If that's the case, let me comment on that motion, because that's probably the easiest thing I can comment on. I kind of like the motion. I'm not sure that the percentage you use for the roof is necessarily the percentage I would use, and we could discuss that. And I thought the motion itself, that was not a problem for me. I thought it was a good motion, notwithstanding that I wanted to talk about the whole thing. But what I thought would be helpful is, because we have these key issues, I mean, to me, one of the issues, for example, is what you said, shouldn't the roof be considered separately? And the architect made that point, too, I think, and I think it makes a lot of sense to say, you've got the walls, and then you've got the roof. Let's deal with the roof separately, and let's deal with the walls separately. So I throw that as a discussion point. Also, we've had discussions as to what does visibility mean? And obviously, the word visibility means a number of things, but within the context of the statute, visibility doesn't have to mean the dictionary definition, because what we're saying here in visibility is what would the community consider visibility, i.e. acceptable visibility? That's why I think there's a problem with the term visibility. And so I think we have to talk about that. Also, I'm just throwing these things out so we can talk them up. The other thing, one of the key things that we're going to, I think, talk about tonight, was the question of using trees, that kind of thing, as screening. And I think that's going to require a fair amount of conversation to see that. So I'm just trying to, try to put on the table the issues that I see that we want to talk about, and asking my fellow commissioners to throw on the other things that we should talk about before we start making a motion or motions. Let me just look here for a second. One of the, there are two things going on here. One, we're trying to protect the community. And two, we're trying not to essentially confiscate the property of the person who is in the hillside. And essentially, that means the person ought to be able to build something. So we start with that. Otherwise, it would be really easy to say, visibility means we can't see you. And then, it's from where? And I've heard arguments tonight, it's from anywhere, because it isn't just from the valley floor, it's from the guy who's higher up, or whatever. So if that's the case, we're going to buy the park, because that means people can't build, and my understanding of law is, if they can't build, you just bought the park. So I don't think we want to do that. So I think, personally, I think we have to come up with a way to allow people to build without offending the sensibilities of those of us who do not live in the hillsides. And that's what we're talking about tonight. So I'm hopeful that we get a really good discussion, because I am troubled with how we enact something, so when somebody comes in and says, I'd like to build a home up here, and we say, okay, here's what you have to do. To me, it has to make sense, and it has not to be confiscatory. So that's what we're talking about. And we've talked about a couple of things. One is, if it's less than 18 feet or less, it's like it doesn't exist. And I don't think that's the case. I think an 18-foot house can be quite visible. And I don't think we want an 18-foot house to be quite visible. So I think the extent that we've ignored that in the past, we ought not to ignore it now. So I just throw those out, stream of consciousness, to see if I can get some feedback from my fellow commissioners.
So if I can step in, part of the reason that we had previously discussed, perhaps looking at this as two conversation points, the color averaging, and then the visibility, is the color averaging has been met by this commission and with the council, which agreed with the idea of the averaging of the, I'm going to say, the house vertical surfaces, an average of 30, with the roof being separate with a cap of 30. In the, I believe it was March, meeting of the Town Council, they reviewed this document, and, or reviewed this, asked staff to go back, do some wordsmithing, and bring it to us as a bit of a formality. Would you care to...
So it was part of Davedon's request to do the averaging that was reviewed by the Planning Commission, ultimately reviewed by the council, and the council did say, direct staff to bring back the potential to allow color averaging in other areas of the hillside. Now, the one distinction or clarification I'd make is that the proposal from Davedon did include the roofs. We don't have to include the roofs, there is an opportunity to separate that. And I've drafted some language to address that. I think Vice Chair Badami's motion was strictly dealing with colors, and wasn't dealing with the visibility, but we can move forward from there.
Wasn't she, wasn't what she said separating the roof from the walls? I think that was fairly clear.
She did include that.
Which, if we want to pass this down, this is the document that staff created based on the guidance of council, that provides an item that discusses, as again, as I said, the vertical surface of the house separately from the roof. The roof is not involved in the average. The roof has a maximum LRV of 30. So Commissioner O'Donnell, let me just, so the reason, and perhaps looking at this as two motions, is one has already been reviewed by the commission and the council. We know that the other point, which you spoke to so eloquently, is going to involve a very, I think, lengthy discussion. This perhaps may be something that we may be able to look at. Mr. Paulson has the document up there, and perhaps might be able to make a recommendation to council on this document, and then move into the discussion of the visibility. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I appreciate that, and I think you're correct on that. And what that may mean is, we go back to Commissioner Badami's motion in a few moments. But the one thing I'm concerned about is the use of, well, what we use for reflectivity on the surfaces of the walls. We've gotten a written statement by our town architect, thinking that 30 percent is too low. And we've heard some discussions that in some instances, it may be too low for really good architecture. So I don't know whether we're going to discuss that or not. To the extent that people feel that's something that council wants, and is already considered, maybe it's not the right time to do that. But I've been persuaded by what the town architect said, and also by the demonstration we had tonight of the colors. And I, for one, would not like to see a bunch of homes up in the hills that were all just dark-colored homes. And I think that 30 percent pretty much does that. So if you take a shingled house, like was shown in this exhibit, the LRV review, you couldn't have that house, I don't believe, because it's too light. Now, in fact, it may be too light for the hillside. But does that mean that we just automatically drop it back down to 30 percent? I have trouble when the town architect raises a serious question about that, when my visual observation also has doubts that that's the way to go. So I think in considering the motion, assuming that Commissioner Badami makes that again, because I think it's a good motion, I would like to at least be sure that my fellow commissioners think that that 30 percent, as suggested in that document, for the walls, not the roof, is the right way to go. Once we dispose of that, as you suggest, then we can go into the more difficult matters, although I think the LRV thing is a reasonably difficult thing, but it has a fairly quick answer, because you can say 30 percent, you can say 40 percent. I mean, that's a fairly simple word, but the concept is not.
So Commissioner Hanson, one minute. So Commissioner O'Donnell, I hope this is all right with Mr. Hale, but on these color chips, I did write on them, 27 and 41, based on the back, just so you, as we are doing this discussion, we can pass this back and forth to one another to look at the comparison between those percentages. Okay, sorry. Commissioner Hanson?
So I wanted to respond to Commissioner O'Donnell's comments. I, too, thought that we were having this special meeting so that we could take a little more time and maybe go through the questions that staff had raised, and/or the, some of the documents we got presented with. In the case of the color averaging, at the 50,000-foot level, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, the 30 percent is clearly too restrictive, and the color averaging makes sense, but the devil's in the details. And I just thought it would be worth maybe going quickly over some of the questions before I was ready to take a vote, but I, you know, I'm pretty comfortable with where we are right now, but there's maybe a couple nuances. Just, for example, one was, what happens to houses that aren't more than 25 percent visible? Do they have to comply with the 30 percent, and they're not allowed to use color averaging, or they don't have to worry about colors at all? So, like, that's some stuff that I thought we should talk about, just to be sure.
So I just offer that the intent of the language, that as if the house is not visible, which is using the current definition of visible, which is 25 percent or more, then they could use LRV averaging. If the house is visible, then they cannot use the averaging concept. So that was what was applied for the Highlands Plan Development. There was not a separation of the roof. Ms. Badami, Vice Chair Badami's motion did separate the roof. There was a lot of discussion around that at the last meeting, so I just drafted some language, and that's the language that they passed around that's currently up there, which excludes the roof, and uses the, only the vertical walls for doing the averaging.
All right. So let me read that, play that back. What I heard you say is, if the house is defined as visible, whatever that percentage is, they must have all materials be under 30 percent LRV?
Correct.
Okay. And then it's only if they're not visible that they can use color averaging?
Correct.
Okay. That helps. And then, just to comment on the viewing platform, I think that's more complicated, and so I thought we would need to talk about that one a little bit more, so.
That's right. We're going to talk about the averaging, and then move into the viewing platforms. Understood. Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, tell us for, maybe, oh, okay.
Go ahead, and then I'll chime in.
Obviously, this whole thing is perplexing to a certain extent. When you look at the color samples we have here, and you get up to 41%, I think, and then you, once you get past 41%, you start getting fairly light colors. I don't, personally, I don't, I don't like 30%. And I do like averaging. And I don't like the distinction between the 18-foot house and every other house. Because visibility, if you're using binoculars, as we're using, I don't care if the house is 18 feet or 35 feet in height, it's either gonna be visible or not visible. And if we're saying, because you're 18 feet, somehow you're not visible, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I guess I would like to not be bound by what now exists, but to make our recommendations. And our recommendations would be, it doesn't make any difference whether you're 18 feet or not, the rules of visibility apply. As far as to whether it's 25% or not, we can talk about that. But whatever the visibility issue is, should apply to both, not simply on the square footage of the smaller house versus the larger house. And then as far as the LRV is concerned, I think 30% is too dark. When I'm looking at the exhibit we have here, I think it's six, six colors, I guess, the chair marked up to the 41% and not beyond, and I can kind of see why, I personally would feel more comfortable with something like the 40, 41% on averaging. And I would think that the averaging should apply whether the house is 18 feet or higher. And I would also think that the suggestion made by Commissioner Badami, that we separate out the roof, is a really reasonable thing to do, because the roof should not dictate the rest of the house. And yet, the roof should have fairly good rules, because if anything's gonna be visible, it's gonna be the roof. So those are, I think, three points that I would like us to consider when we get to the roof. And then, on the question of the more subtle things, I think the chair is correct. We probably could take care of the visibility issues now, the LRV now, leaving open some of these more difficult conversations for after the motion. This evening, we'd still do it, but at least we would have the LRV thing taken care of, if everybody's comfortable with that.
I know, I certainly am, because it has been something that's been discussed, and while we may want to say, as we move forward, when it says with the exceptions of home of 24.5%, if we want to say, at this moment, a percentage deemed acceptable by the planning commission and the council, if we're going to discuss what that percentage is, we can always put that wording into this motion, knowing that it is tied to the next discussion. So if that makes the commissioners more comfortable, that we are not tying into a percentage that's written up here, of course, this was Mr. Paulson's draft, we can do that. Is that correct?
Well, one of the previous meetings, the rounding was discussed, and so we were asked to change the visibility to 24.5, so I made this consistent. Regardless of what the final number is here, the council will make the final decision on whether there's a number, what that number is, if there is a number. And so all of these sections will be trued up to make sure that the numbers all match from a visibility perspective. So I wouldn't get too caught up in the number on this piece. It's really, are we comfortable with averaging? If we're comfortable with averaging, should the roof material be included? So those are the first two questions, and I think Vice Chair Badami's motion gave me the perspective that she was comfortable with those first two questions, for sure. And then you end up with the second two questions on the, should there be a maximum for individual exterior materials? And if there is, should there be some exception for, you know, small trim details and things like that? So those were the last two of the four questions. So the first two, I felt, were answered by the vice chair's motion.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Where to begin? First of all, I would accept the motion to separate the roof from the rest of our I think the thing that, regardless of the colors, what we have to realize is, we're speaking about the hillside. So whenever we're making these decisions, they have to be linked back to what is in this document, that actually, for the most part, has been serving us pretty well over the last, well, since 19, or 2001 or something, 1994? 2004, thank you. I didn't, I should remember that, but, so, and I think it's been fairly good. And I would hope that anyone coming into this town that wants to put something in our hillsides realizes how much they mean to this town. They are our character, they are our value, we value them. So that being said, though, I do think that there can be reason to do color averaging, especially as I went through the minutes and realized that Joel said that, when you do the color averaging, Joel, it is with, it's weighted, correct?
Correct.
That gives it more detail, and so I can, I can live with that. But what I'm concerned about are getting into these lighter colors of trim, I suppose. But if they're on a house that can't be viewed from the valley floor, I'm more comfortable that it could, you know, go ahead and be weighted and averaged. So, you know, I don't want to hold up any architecture, I don't want to, you know, cramp any architectural style. And I will say that I drove through the hillsides the other day, and what I, I drove through the Highlands was one place I drove. And there were a lot of very light homes there with the stone that they were using, but that, you know, things will darken after a while, even if it is stone, it tends to darken. And the, you know, the trees haven't even been put into most of those areas. So I'm, I think I'm more comfortable now with the, with what I'm seeing. And I think we need to be reasonable about this. Or the other suggestion I would make is this about color. If it is a one subdivision or one grouping of homes, that perhaps, because this is what usually happens in, when developments are put in, color palettes are already chosen. So I think that if those color palettes kept in mind, what, you know, what we are trying to do here is to be reasonable, but yet to be, to have, be respectful of what we want as a town, you know, I'm comfortable with that. Now, that language isn't in any of this, so I'm just hoping that somehow, there's a preamble, either, when a document is filled out for an application for a building, that there might be, you know, some caveat that says, please pay attention to whatever, and I don't know what the language would be, but those would be my thoughts at the moment.
So I'm gonna ask Commissioner Talasfor a question, and then I'll go to... Was that a second to the motion with some added comments before we go on with the discussion?
I would second that motion.
With the added comments on the...
With the added comments.
We have the motion read back, it's been so long.
Yes. I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Almost come full circle here. So I moved forward a recommendation to town council to consider adoption of amendments to Chapter 5, Architectural Design of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. I can make the required findings for SEQA. The recommendation would be staff's proposed amendment on page four of the staff report dated October 21st of 2015, and include language that the roof material shall be calculated separately and shall not exceed a maximum light reflectivity, light reflectivity value of 30. I believe Joel Paulson has also included a document on the overhead projector that can be included as an exhibit that also incorporates the language of my motion.
All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Actually, Commissioner Hanson had her hand up first, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
I was gonna say, I was gonna be comfortable with the motion, with the only exception being, it seemed like I heard a lot of support for having a cap maximum LRV, which isn't in the current motion, other than on the roof. So I wondered if the maker of the motion would consider putting in a cap for the other materials besides the roof.
Because it's my understanding that if it's visible, there is a cap. Can you clarify this?
There's the distinction of visible versus non-visible. So if it is visible, then there is the cap of 30. If it's not visible, then it's averaging and there is no cap. So I think what Commissioner Hanson is asking is, do we want to have a cap for either, A, all exterior materials on the elevation for the averaging, using the averaging option? Or do we want to have something where trim is separated out, which are the last two questions on, in the staff report relating to LRV?
With that explanation, are you still asking me to amend my motion?
Yes.
I think she would like a cap maximum.
To add a maximum LRV value to the exterior...
Any exterior material.
To any exterior materials. Just to throw out a number, the number, I just pulled out a number earlier today, 60% seemed reasonable. They were suggesting earlier tonight, 75%. I don't, what the number is doesn't matter, but other than that, it could be bright white. And, you know, and if we're gonna be having these standards in the hillside, it seemed like you want to keep the average within a range.
So can I take a moment to point out to my commissioners that this document, provided by Mr. Hale, on the last two pages, gives us some colors that have samples, I took yours, that has some samples that would show those LRV numbers. So if what we're mostly talking about here is putting like a cap on perhaps trim, which was the last question from staff, you know, are we comfortable with, I think this says 58, or that says 71, is there a cap we want to place on those, as Commissioner Hanson said, so we're not looking at a stark white? So would we like to make that clarification and add that to the motion? I perhaps would suggest...
Can I ask you?
Sure.
I'm a little confused now. Not that I was ever not confused. We're still getting onto visibility, and I guess we'll discuss that later, but the definition of visibility that we're using basically says, you're not visible if you're 18 feet or less. And I personally don't like that, because I think that's crazy. But to me, if you're visible, you're visible. But the question is, what color should you be able to use if you're visible? Forgetting for the moment, the 18-foot and greater and lesser, and that kind of thing. And I do believe that if you stay at 30% for everything or less, you're gonna have a lot of dark, dark houses out there, and I don't think that's a good idea. And secondly, if you want to have some trim, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to have the trim being the same color as the house. And therefore, there's gotta be a different color. Well, you can make it 30, or 25, or whatever, make it so dark, but if you do what Commissioner Hanson was suggesting, and that is raise it a bit, now, I'm not sure I'd go up to that particular number she had in mind, but in looking at the package of smaller exhibits we had, certainly 41, happens to be 41% this exhibit, and there's no magic to 1%, but the 41 is something I could live with on averaging. But I would like to see the averaging applied to anything up there which is visible as normally defined, and not as defined by, if it's 18 feet, it's suddenly invisible. And that seems to be what we're doing. If you're 18 feet or less, maybe I'm wrong, but I hear us saying, well, you're not visible. And we have enough trouble with the term visibility, which was pointed out to us. But I don't have a problem when you define visibility and say, this is what visibility means. You don't look it up in the dictionary anymore, that's what it means. And so to me, visibility means, if you build a house up there, it's either, to the extent that it's visible, no 18-foot exception, then you have to deal with the colors that we are imposing. And those colors, I think 30 is just too dark. And I would like to see something higher, at least 40%, and I would like to see averaging on whatever you build up there. And I agree, though, that the roof ought to be separate and apart, and the roof could be 30%, that doesn't bother me at all. Although, somebody pointed out, well, what if you put tile? And I have no idea what the LRV would be for tile. But clearly, sometimes tile could be a nice texture to use up there. I don't know whether Mr. Paulson has some handle on what tile is from an LRV. Do you?
So generally, in looking back at some of the old documents for the Highlands specifically, I think of the 18 or 19 homes that they had, there was only one roof that exceeded 30, and that was 31. And clay tile, they had some clay tiles, submission tile, those were all well below 30, so I don't think the 30 is an issue. I also wanted to clarify, the 18-foot visibility is not relating to the color. So if it's visible, as defined in Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, whatever that is, then they would have to comply with the LRV of 30 for the exterior materials. The difference for the visibility, as it relates to height, is the height gets reduced if they're more than 25% visible. So they would not be afforded the ability to do averaging as we're currently looking at it. So to clarify that.
If they were 25% or more?
Correct. They become visible based on our current definition, and whatever that definition becomes, whether they're 18 feet, 12 feet, 25 feet, they'd have to meet that requirement.
All right, thank you.
Well, I, I'm glad that this came up, because we should have caught it. And I, I would be comfortable with looking at the samples we have here. I would be comfortable with this, at least at 40% for trim, I could live with that, I think. I don't think that would be taking us too far out of what we're trying to do, which is to protect our environment and, and to make the houses, you know, fit into where they are if they're up in the hillside. So I think maybe for trim, maybe a 40? I mean, that's what I might recommend.
Can I ask for clarification? That's a cap, so any...
That would just be on the trim, not, and that would only be on houses that met the current visibility definition.
So LRV averaging would be allowed for houses that were not visible as defined by the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. I think, in, I don't want to put words in...
Go ahead.
Commissioner O'Donnell's mouth, but I think he was talking more of the 30 as the baseline is too low, and the whole baseline should be raised to 40.
Oh, you were talking about the whole...
Not for the trim. Whereas I think Commissioner Hanson was talking about whether or not there should be a cap, and maybe that should be higher, and I can't recall the number, whether it was 60.
Oh, I see, okay, I thought we were going to...
The 60 number. So those are kind of two different ideas. And so I think those are the topics that we probably want to discuss to remedy these last two questions of the four in the staff report.
Okay, well, then I, then my suggestion would be that the trim would, could be at 40, but I don't think I'd raise it any higher than that.
So I think you run the risk, and it's, I know it's hard, and on your color copy, it probably doesn't come across, and you have two colors there on the last two pages.
Right. And, you know, you can't look at, believe me, colors like this, you can't.
Sure. So I think the challenge, just looking at the copy of the LRV scale that's in your staff report, the difference between 30 and 40 is extremely slight. So that is not gonna provide a lot of opportunity for contrast, which is what I believe some people have been speaking to. So I think, that's why I say, I think there are two separate issues that Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner O'Donnell are talking about. I think Commissioner O'Donnell's comfortable with raising the 30 to 40, just generally, and then the average could be down to 40. And then Commissioner Hanson's talking about the maximum of any exterior material being 60. So I think those were the two points that were being made. Now, obviously, the maker of the motion and the secretary can discuss that.
Well, and my thing applied to the houses that were not defined as visible. I didn't make a recommendation relative to that.
I assumed that, yes.
Yep.
With the explanation given by Mr. Paulson, between the 30 and the 40%, that it's so slight, I'd rather simplify this, rather than complicated with more wording. So my motion stands as originally read.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
What I heard Mr. Paulson say was that the homes which have been built by Davedon have not really had a problem with 30%, except in one instance. Now, maybe I misremembered what you just said.
I was specifically talking to roofing material.
Oh, okay, so yes, then I did misunderstand. I guess my problem is... Oh, okay. So yes, then I did misunderstand. I guess my problem is if the motion is, we don't care whether it's the roof or it's the walls, they're not going to exceed 30%. Okay, then again, I'm lost in what your motion was.
My motion separated the roof out.
And what is the percentage on the roof?
30%.
And what is the percentage on the walls?
It's color averaging.
So
So it's
Cap, on the roof is 30. Cap, on the roof, cap. Does not go higher than 30.
That's fine.
The averaging on the vertical walls, and that would include trim, is 30. So you could have a trim that's 60, but the house color is darker. The average of those have to be below 30.
And that would apply to any house, whether 18 feet or more or less.
It would, it would apply to any house that was not visible as ultimately defined in Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines.
Okay, I understand.
So that said, Commissioner Badami has stated that her motion stands, and we do have a second from Commissioner Talisfor with a couple comments. Do we feel comfortable now making a motion, understanding the differential between the averaging on the vertical, the cap on the roof, and understanding that this is, this is for what we are going to consider, the percentage could change in the next discussion, visible? Is that something we're comfortable with now?
Visible. Just want to be sure. Earlier in the evening, I thought somebody said visible, if you are visible 25% or more, then you have to go down to an 18-foot house, as I understand it. Then the question is, are you now not visible? Because I would like to think you are visible, and if you are visible, then the motion would apply.
You are not necessarily not visible. So you could be 18 feet and completely visible. So you still would not be able to use the averaging in that case. The averaging would only be allowed to be used for any home, whether you're 18 or 25, if you're less than the 25% threshold for visibility.
All right, I understand that. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And I'm going to ask, are we ready to take a vote? For recommendation, this is for the LRV content only, this is not visibility. Are we ready to move for a recommendation to council on this item? All in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. So now we have, with Commissioner O'Donnell's comments, moved perfectly into our visibility portion of this. And I would ask, perhaps, to assist us, because this is a wide-ranging topic, that we maybe first look at the four questions developed by staff to begin this discussion. The first being, should a note be added to require a deed restriction regarding replacement of the trees used for screening in the visibility analysis? Commissioner O'Donnell?
We all know the position taken by one commissioner who submitted a letter this evening. So if for the moment we assume that that position does not prevail, I think we should have a deed restriction. To the extent that we're going to use trees as any kind of screen, I think those trees ought to be assured of being there. And therefore, I think we should have a deed restriction. The language of the deed restriction will have to be worked out because obviously, if you have a 50-year-old tree that dies, you don't replace it with a five-gallon tree. So the language would have to be worked out. But I would think, on the question, should we have a deed restriction, my feeling is yes.
Commissioner Badami, and then Commissioner Talisfor.
I would be in agreement with a deed restriction as well.
Commissioner Talisfor?
And I would as well. And also, I did catch in this desk item from Mr. Abbs that he even suggested, and I think it's a good suggestion, I, I may, would have been a little hesitant in suggesting it myself, but, let's see if I can find it. But he also, he also says that having a deed restriction on trees, right, encourage tree plantings and replacement of declining trees. Even putting a deed restriction on declining trees, prior perhaps to, or have that just be part of the the building of the, of the house. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Commissioner O'Donnell, it does to me.
Well, I think the deed restriction has to be clear enough to be enforceable. And therefore, to the extent that trees are used as screening, and they will have to be identified.
Right.
Because you could have, let's say, 30 trees up there, and only five of them were used, or 10 of them were used for screening. Those should be identified, and those, let's call that 1 through 10. And if trees 1 through 10 and/or any one of them becomes, either comes down by storm, or it just dies, or gets ill, gets such that it loses its, the screening effect, then the deed, and we're not drafting the deed, but the deed restriction would say, that will be replaced, and it will be replaced, some definition of promptly. And it will also say, to what extent the replacement tree, how big it will be. Obviously, a 50-year-old tree is not going to be replaced with a 50-year-old tree. But we may say X size. So that's my understanding of the deed restriction. We identify which trees the deed restriction applies to. It'll be hard enough to enforce this, and it will largely be enforced by people saying, oh, my goodness, we didn't even go see that. Why do we, why can we see that now? Oh, that tree's gone. So, so I just, that's the way I perceive that to be.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
This one seems like a no-brainer in terms of something that we should definitely include in the, you know, view analysis criteria, especially, you know, because things could happen to the trees, and there's no other way to mitigate it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think that we could look to staff when it goes to, we'll look at the wording on, you know, if it's damaged and how it's replaced, but.
Staff will craft that language after this process is completed.
Especially if that tree is being used as part of the screening.
And to make sure, based on Commissioner O'Donnell's comment, when we get the arborist report, my recollection is, it's identified the trees that are for screening. So we would be utilizing the arborist report, the trees identified as screening for that deed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Then the next one is, should trees with poor or fair ratings be used for screening in the visibility analysis? Commissioner O'Donnell?
So oftentimes, when our consulting arborists, or even outside arborists, do arborist reports, they will rate the trees from, you know, poor, fair, good, excellent. And there's also some, depending on the number of their preservation suitability and health, they may fall on the border. So they, they end up in that poor, fair category, or the fair, good category. So there's, there's gradations between the solid, I think it's four categories generally looked at by our arborist.
Commissioner Talisfor, then Commissioner Badami.
I just have a question. Does it matter in this at all if a tree, I mean, do we care that a tree is deciduous or evergreen in these visibility calculations?
So clearly, that's something that was brought up by Dr. Weisman and Ms. Cantona.
Right.
And so that's something that the commission for sure could consider, as I'm sure is clear to all the commissioners. Staff had a recommendation for methodology that covered the broad categories, many of which are discussed in far more specificity in Dr. Weisman and Ms. Cantona's version of the methodology. So that's.
I mean, for me, it's, it's, it's almost like, should more weight be given? If a tree is, tree, it could be a cluster of trees that, for the most part, screen, you know, the house, but then at, for eight months of the year, I don't even know.
Sure, that can be part of your recommendation to the, to the council, whether or not you want to include those or not. That, that's definitely something that could be discussed.
Especially on a house that's, you know, that could be extremely visible. So.
Actually, it's Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
Okay, I was going down the line with the questions on the staff report, so I was on number two. Should trees with poor or poor, fair ratings be used for screening in the visibility analysis? And with the explanation given by Joel Paulson, I would have to say no, that they should not be used for screening in the visibility analysis.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Hanson?
And I, I thought when we had the consulting arborist, that she said typically when they're, she talked a little bit about the rating, I mean, that, that they were in pretty bad shape if they had that rating, because she has a fair to good rating as well, that this is fair to poor and poor. So I would be comfortable taking those out of the calculations.
Okay, good. So then the next item is, should street, excuse me, trees with sparse canopies be used for screening in the visibility analysis? Commissioner O'Donnell?
That's an interesting question, because if one assumes that it has a sparse canopy as a, as always, as opposed to ill health, then there simply is a question of, you're taking certain trees and you're identifying them as your screening. And to the extent that the sparse canopy tree is used, let's say we have 10 trees to screen, one of them's not that good because of the canopy, but taken together, it's fine. Then you could say, well, it isn't, clearly you couldn't have 10 trees that have sparse canopies, but you could perhaps have one out of 10 that had sparse, whatever that means, and that's, to me, somewhat subjective. When you look at it, you may say, that isn't sparse, that's almost nonexistent, and you say, that doesn't work. So sparse, to me, means it does screen, not as much as perhaps some other trees might screen, but it does screen. So there's a lot of room there, and I'm not sure how we benefit ourselves to throw out just blanketly sparse screening if we don't know what it means, and I don't know what it means.
So just quickly, my thought on this, it had been that if it was a tree that had been identified as screening, yet it was healthy, but again, sparse to me may not be sparse to you, then yes. If it's sparse because it's not healthy, then no. What do you guys think? Commissioner Badami?
Well, I'm kind of torn on that one, too, but some of it's going to depend on item number four. Should visibility analysis be done at a specific time of year? So we would have to determine that as well.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's do that first. So.
And that also falls under, you know, deciduous, evergreen, right?
True, true.
Yeah, same thing.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yeah, let me comment on four then, because I think that's a good idea to tie them together. The problem I have with a specific time of year is, if you come in and you want to build your house, and you're eight months away from the specific time of the year, I'm not sure that's necessary if what you say is, we're going to judge on what it looks like today. And if you want to come in when it's not, it's not at its best, then that's your problem. If, on the other hand, you want to wait till it's in full bloom, I will use that phrase, that's okay, too. Then that's your choice whether you wait. So if I were a homeowner, and I came in eight months before it was going to be really big, I'd have to have enough other screening to take care of that, and I'd have to make my own decision. I don't think that's unfair. If you just arbitrarily say, no matter what the screening looks like, we're going to wait for some eight-month period or whatever from now, I think that is unfair. To allow the applicant to take the tree as it is at the time that applicant is filing shouldn't hurt the public, and certainly, the applicant has chosen to do that. So I don't think the applicant should be heard to complain either. So that's my thought on that.
I agree. Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Talisfor?
I wondered, I thought definitely that we shouldn't hold up any development process because of whether the tree was in leaf out or not. But I, one thing I thought about was, would it be possible to put in like a percentage screening factor to deciduous tree? Because there are certain times of year when it wouldn't be just any number, like 50% or something like that. It would make it simple, and at least would factor in that it's not going to be available for screening year-round. I don't know if that's the right number, maybe we should ask the arborist or somebody, but, but that was the way I thought of handling. I definitely wouldn't want to support holding up a development for another six months, you know, if, if they have done all the other things.
So I would say that may be more of a very specific question for the arborist, because I wonder if in 11 years, a planning commission would be sitting up here going, where did 50% come from? I know, I mean, I'm just saying, right? If, if, I mean, trees are funny, right? So if we're going to start putting a percentage on it, I want it to come from a professional, and I want it in writing in the record.
I can, I completely agree.
Tom and Joanne will still be here and remember, but we may not. I don't know.
Coming back from the grave.
Commissioner Talisfor?
So my feeling about it is that although I, I can, you know, I appreciate the sentiment and the spirit of, you know, measuring these tree screens from, you know, different times of the year. It's not really fair to anybody that's trying to, you know, build a home or whatever. And so I wouldn't be in favor of that. But I think a professional would be able, as they're, you know, evaluating all the trees on the plot, very, very easily say, now, you realize that in, you know, this time of the year, there will be no leaves on these trees. And that could be incorporated into the report, I would think. Joel, does that happen now at all?
It doesn't happen now. I think that that's something that could be looked at. I guess the question is, you know, then it requires, depending on the time of year, when it comes before the planning commission, you see the photos, and then you have to imagine what it looks like.
Right. Well, and I think you can. I mean, I think we all can, sure. I mean, I think that that's not a.
You're free to make that determination. I don't know how you make that objectively. Depending on, and it obviously will be variable across species, I would imagine as well.
Exactly.
So you could make this part of your recommendation, that you're not necessarily interested in time of year, per se.
Right.
But that you want to have additional input prior to the council meeting, before then making their decision regarding this specific topic.
Something like, right. You know, because right now, the blue oaks, as I learned, are, in this drought, are, you know, losing their leaves because that's how they're protecting themselves. So, you know, I can, you know, I take that into consideration when I look at lots. So that would be my comment.
All right, Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner O'Donnell?
Is there anywhere in the proposed documents to, to take any trees out that are there today? I mean, we're talking about what shouldn't be included. So, for example, is, if you're going to do like a simulation based on the photos that were taken, and, and eliminate trees that are fair to good, couldn't you do the same thing with the deciduous tree and see where they stand? If they meet the visibility criteria without the, those as screening, then they should be fine. And if they don't, then maybe further investigation would have to be done. But, you know, there must be a way to, if, if that's a way that the analysis part of this could be handled, then you could eliminate those trees from the screening to see where they stand. Does that make sense?
It does. I guess I'm wondering if, I know, this is just my question to staff, following up on that. In the past, we've, we've had some follow-up with the arborist with things like this. Is that something, you know, if we could perhaps put in there as, as an option to the commission if there is a property of concern? That that could be something we could request of the arborist? How, no, do some screening analysis.
Yeah, but, okay, but the screening analysis after, after, in other words, the person comes in, the tree's not leafed out, it's not going to leaf out for, let's just take a number, eight months. They build a house, guess what? It didn't come out the way we thought it would come out. What do you do? You clearly can't say tear the house down. I guess you could say plant on the tree, but the tree is not going to be like the house, the tree that it was. I guess my, which, I was just going to say it once, and I'm, I'll shut up for a change, but if the applicant wants to use living things as a screen, I think I'm personally a little nervous, because living things have a habit of dying, or not being well, or whatever. But I can see, well, okay, that's all right, because we know that those things are there. But if you want to do it, and I've got to guess what it's going to look like in six months, even an arborist has an educated guess, as far as I'm concerned, I can tell you, come back in six months and let's look at it. Or I can say, make sure your screen doesn't rely on that. Now, that may sound harsh, and maybe it is harsh, but it certainly is clear. And so whatever the rest of you all agree, I just want to say, I personally would like to judge the screen at the time I'm asked to judge the screen, without having people interpret it for me, such as saying, well, in six months, or eight months, or four months, it's going to look like this. And we also know that it takes longer than six months, or eight months, or whatever, to build a house. So what happens if they're halfway through the house, and we find out that tree just didn't make it, or it doesn't look like we thought it would? I don't know why we put ourselves at risk for that, so.
Can I ask Commissioner O'Donnell a question, just to make sure that I'm, I'm understanding it clearly? Because I, I think I understand and agree. it clearly, because I think I understand and agree, the onus is on the property owner or the applicant. You came in in January, and there's not a lot of coverage, but you need this percentage, whatever that percentage coverage, now. So that means, maybe if everything is very healthy, and the rains come, you may have twice that coverage, but you came in today, and that's, is that what I'm understanding you're saying?
That's my, that's what I'm espousing.
Okay. Commissioner Tausford.
And also, I think that you're espousing that you don't depend on trees, you depend on how you're supposed to build in the, on the lots in constrained regions with the guidelines we have for building, and because the screening is only, that's secondary.
But it's critical.
It's critical, but it's secondary to...
My comments apply only to the screening issue, the house and where it's located. It's a totally different issue. All I'm saying is, because we're all talking about, when do you judge the screening? And some of you have said, and certainly is a fair position, we'll try to estimate what it's going to look like in six months, and I'm saying, I don't want to do that. If you want to come in now and say, this is my screening, I'm going to say, well, no, it isn't, because it's not going to work, or, yeah, that's great, it's going to be better in six months, but you qualify right now. Because I don't know why we should take the risk of that kind of screening. That's all I'm saying.
So, I understand that, but I know that when I go out and look at anything, you know, a lot that we have to consider, and screening is there, I do try to imagine it when trees would lose their leaves. That does, that helps me a little bit in making a decision.
Okay. Any other? So, to make sure, I'm going to go back, the visibility analysis done at a specific time of year, we've all said, no, we're not going to have an applicant wait six months. And the trees with sparse canopies to be used for screening, well, that ties somewhat to item number four, if the sparse canopy is because it's lost its leaves due to the season, that is at the onus of the homeowner, but if it's a healthy tree at any given time, then yes, it would be considered. Is that what I'm understanding on these four? So that being said, I hit these four before I hit these three top, top topics, because they're going to be a longer discussion. Could we take a five-minute break, and then dive into what I think is going to be a more lengthy topic? Is everyone comfortable with that? All right, we're going to take a quick break. All right, we're going to reopen the planning commission meeting. I would like to now, there are three questions up on the top of this sheet, we're looking at page three of the staff report. I kind of focused on those bottom four, I felt those would be a little bit of an easier discussion point. I'd like now to go back up to number one, which I think people have just been talking about off and on this whole night, with, is the 25% visibility cutoff too generous? Staff has replied to this question, that this is the current standard, and if we decide that this percentage should be lowered, then that can be included in our recommendation. I think when we discussed it previously, there's no real hard fact on the 25%. So does anyone have any comment? Do we say, you know, obviously 25% is kind of hard to quantify anyways, there's a range anyways? Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner O'Donnell.
I actually had a question. I wondered, because we were doing a lot of work on the plan development as well, we were looking at other jurisdictions. We're clearly not the only town that has, that has hills in it, and has viewing issues, so I was just curious, because I was pondering this question, if, you know, there's other benchmarks out there of where, how others looked at it, because it seems to be a number that no one knows where it came from, and I, and it would help me to know if there was any precedent for this, one way or the other, so.
Staff didn't look at any other jurisdictions in terms of visibility percentages, we did look at some of the LRV percentages, but not...
Yeah, and I saw, and those comments were, that you made were helpful in terms of looking at this, and I thank you for that, but, okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
A comment, then I have a question. I guess the comment is that the 25% is purely arbitrary, but any percentage is going to be basically purely arbitrary. It's not something you can prove mathematically, one way or the other. So somebody thought the 25% sounded reasonable to them, and I'm sure that's what they thought. And we have to explore, I suppose, what is it that is reasonable? And if I were to ask Mr. Paulson again to explain to me the impact of the 25%, in other words, one suggestion we've seen tonight was that we reduce that to 20%. Okay, so I guess, I need to have, I'm sorry for being slow on this, but I need some reminder on the impact of the cutoff. So whether it's 25%, or 30%, or 15%, discuss with me a little bit, what's the, what happens?
So there's a specific impact as it relates to height. Currently, if you're not visible, you can have up to a maximum height of 25 feet, and you can have up to a maximum height from the maximum high to the maximum low of 35 feet. If you are visible, the 25% or more, then you have a maximum height of up to 18, 18 feet, and the maximum high to low, I'll have to look exactly, I believe it's 28 feet, but I will confirm that if that's different. So that's the impact. The other impact would be, based on your previous action tonight, that if it's visible, you would not be able to use the color averaging option, should that be adopted by council. So those are the two that come to mind.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Badami.
To Commissioner Hanson's inquiry about other jurisdictions and what they use with their measurements, I did come across the city of Montecito with their hillside standards and guidelines, and they don't use a visibility percentage cutoff. In fact, they just state that the average height of the primary residence should not exceed 16 feet, which I felt was rather interesting. So I did want to share that with the commission.
All right, Commissioner Tausford.
I have a question of staff, so I can understand this as well, again, but that 25%, is that in one place, or is that in the collection of the entire house, and as it may appear across, I think I know the answer, but I want to be sure that I understand that.
I believe it would be across in elevation, so the elevation that's visible.
So it could be 15 here, 10 here.
You could have portions of multiple elevations.
Right, okay. So, you know, I look at anything that is a number, you know, as, as a limit, it's sort of like a speed limit, isn't it? You know, we have, we can go 65 miles an hour, and yet, many people go 75 miles an hour or more, and it seems to be the goal of some people on the roads today, which is a whole other conversation. But what I just want to avoid is that when a developer or a builder sees a percentage that says 25% visible, that that isn't what they're going to build to, so that they're thinking, oh, I can make it this, I can build this house like this, because I can let 25% of it show, either in one space or across the elevation. So that, that is what I am trying to prevent, I guess, or would like to preserve or protect, that that isn't a number that's a goal. And sometimes when you have limits like that, it becomes the goal instead of what we, you know, it's the extreme. Do you see what I mean? It's the extreme when we don't really want that. So how do you prevent that? And I'm not sure that having a number prevents it. My comment for now, anyway.
Commissioner Badami?
I'm not comfortable with the number either, or even what we have now is actually a creative definition of a visible home. A visible home is what it is, a visible home capable of being seen. And back to a little bit of the tree canopy conversation, you can still have a full canopy on a tree, but you can still see through the leaves, I mean, it's, it's still going to be visible somewhat. So, back to the, the height percentage, we're arguing over seven feet in height and bulk, that really could be more appropriately spread out by stepping a home down a hill, which they should be done, and maybe keeping these, a visible home, being visible, to 18 feet. So I'm going to throw that out there.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have a problem saying that anything that is visible, well, I guess what you're saying is, the zoning ought to say, everything up there is single-story. And if that's what you want to do, that's what you want to do. But if you say, there's no percentage, it's just, anything which is visible, whatever that means, I think it means a dictionary definition, has to be 18 feet or less, that will be a dramatic change, everything we've ever done. I'm just thinking out loud, and maybe I'm thinking wrong, but I'll let you have your say it in just a minute, because I'm trying to think it through, but it seems to me that I personally have not had a problem with a two-story house, if properly built, and the visibility is okay, whatever that means. So I wouldn't want to have a simple solution, which is to say, all homes will be no greater than, as Montecito sounds like, 16 feet. That's a very simple solution, but I'm not sure it's a solution that I personally would favor. And if you say, no, there could be some homes that could be two stories, you're saying, well, one way to handle that is to step down the hill, and therefore, the height of that home, taken from the ground level as it changes, would be whatever it is, 20 feet or 25 feet or something, you could do that. On the other hand, that presupposes that every lot, and the buildable space in every lot, will fit that, and I don't know that, and I don't think any of us know that. So notwithstanding the arbitrary nature of 25%, and I'm not advocating 25%, I'm not, I haven't pulled anything out of the air, what it is. I think if 25% represents what somebody thought was an acceptable level of visibility, then I would like us to discuss, is there any level of visibility which is quote-unquote acceptable? Because if there is, then the problem is simply 25%. If there isn't, as you said, visibility is visibility, and that's certainly true, except as defined by us, then I have a problem, because if you say, anything which is visible must be 18 feet, or must step down so that in fact, it's 18, 18 feet from the declining contour of the ground, insofar as the roof is concerned, on that declining portion of the ground. That's a dramatic change, one that we have never discussed, I don't think, and I'm not saying it's wrong, and maybe it is right, I don't know, but boy, that's just a dramatic change, and I don't know that we've been briefed on that. In other words, I'd like to have, I would have real problems unless I understood it better.
So I have asked Mr. Paulson to place this up on the overhead. The left is obviously what we encourage in the hillside, the right is, please don't do this. I wanted to ask Mr. Badami, with what you were stating, as far as potentially looking at a height restriction, the house on the left, what we've done is, we've encouraged that it contour to the hillside. So when you're saying 18 feet, are you saying on any one of those vertical planes, those are 18 feet, or the lowest to the highest point is 18 feet? And I'm asking that pretty specifically, because I would worry then that we would have people that would almost go to the right and keep it on one even plane, rather than look at the contouring, unless you were saying each vertical plane cannot exceed 18 feet. So I wanted some clarification on your thought.
Well, I would say exhibit number one, the do-this, would be where I'm going at, and I'd also like to clarify with Commissioner O'Donnell, that when we talk about a visible home, I'm not saying all the homes in the hillside, I mean, they are subject to the viewing platforms, or vantage points, whatever we want to call them. So those would be the homes that I would be concerned about with the 18-foot restriction.
But almost any home is visible with a 500-millimeter lens, so if you're saying, I want a home up there that nobody can see, otherwise it's visible, I think that is a dramatic departure from anything we've gotten, and if it's correct, I would like to have a lot more staff input and legal input, because as I said before, at some point, you're going to make things unbuildable. And I'm not saying this is it, I'm just saying that's, to me, is such a big departure that I would need more help where I could make that departure.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Tausford?
Yeah, I would like to get back to, then, if we could leave the height for right now, and just get back to the 25% or 24-point, what is that, 4%? 5, 25, okay, 24.5%? Because that is an arbitrary number to me. However, it, what, what would become more, how would I say it? If, how about if it was 15% or 10%? Now, is that pretty unreasonable? Is, is 10% pretty unreasonable? I mean, let's just go through the percentages. What's, what sounds reasonable here? What sounds not reasonable? And I were, how, I'm not sure how to approach this, but I'm...
I don't know how we would answer that.
Yeah.
Because, again, even if we want to look, we had this discussion last time, so I'm going to, I'm going to go back to our, not the meeting, the special meeting that Commissioner Badami led, but the commission meeting prior to, when I think we brought up the 24.5%. Even at that, depending on where we stand and where we look at, 25% is still a range, right? So I think then what we need to look at is, again, we don't want it to turn into where the town is buying all the hillside, because we won't let people build on it. So 25% seems to be the right lot, you can build on it. I would worry if you got down to a number of 10%, we're saying you can't build anywhere. And then we may get ourselves, I would look to our town attorney, we may be getting ourselves into some legal issue. Am I speaking...
Well, I think the visibility, it doesn't say that you can't build anything, but it would restrict you from a height perspective. Yes.
So, you know, that, I guess that's more my concern.
I'm just throwing these numbers out to see, to me, 10% isn't reasonable.
Okay.
But I don't know if 25 is. On the other hand, you know, we do have restrictions now with the colors, I mean, we have that settled, so, you know, that makes me a little more comfortable. But I just, my whole thing is, I just don't want people thinking, well, this is what, this is going to be okay, and I get, I get to have 25% of this house, do you know what I'm saying? Now, I'm thinking people aren't like that, pardon me?
I think you run into that same situation regardless of the number.
Right.
So changing the number doesn't really help you there.
And I think you're right. It's sort of like the far, isn't it?
Sure.
And it should not be a goal, to be 25% visible, so I think that's what we're really grappling with here. How do we, how do we prevent that? If, and how do we protect our hills from that? Which was what I'm trying to do, is link it all back to what's in this document.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I don't think it's like a speed, speed limit, I don't think it's like this is a 65 zone. Whoever builds a house out there, and to the extent they understand what the standard is, let's assume it's 25%. There's a lot of subjectivity to determining the 25%. For example, we've talked about the blue viewing platforms, we've talked about vantage points, because we're not going to be locked into a viewing platform. It may be that the viewing platform isn't reasonable, it ought to be 500 feet the other way, or whatever. So if I'm a builder, and I'm trying to, like you say, go 67 miles an hour, or 70 miles an hour, that's fine, because we all figure a cop will give us five miles, or whatever it is, but here, you don't know what 25% means. So I don't think 25% will set the standard, but at least it's something. And, you know, I can say this, 25% now exists, and if I want to change 25%, I probably ought to have a reason. And it does, it's not a reason to say, I think 10% sounds unreasonable, because I don't know what sounds means. I would not defend 25%. On the other hand, I don't know what to use. And if we say, let's make it totally subjective, and somebody comes in and says, well, what do you think? do you think? And whoever looks at us says, I don't like it, that's not going to work either. So the only good thing about some percentage is there is some objectivity. Difficult, it's a difficult objectivity, but at least it's something. So I think, I don't care whether it's 25% or what it is. I don't have a defense for any number, any percentage. 25% may be too high, I don't know. But I will say this, since we have the number, we ought to have a reason to change the number. I can't defend the number, but I sure as heck can't defend one to change it to.
Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Talasfor.
I just wanted to say, I support Commissioner O'Donnell's position on this. Absent having something, some specific reason to change it, if it has been working, I mean, if we felt that there was a need to tighten things up, the way to do it, in my mind, would be rather than making a dramatic statement about the percentage and what's viewable or not, is to, you know, look at the calculation parts of it, and how you figure out what 25% is, or what viewing platform you use. If that was a place that we thought, and we thought that it needed to be tightened up, that's the way I would do it, without having any benchmark or anything, or any specific reason to change it.
Commissioner Talasfor?
Yeah, I see this, I'm struggling with this as well, because, you know, 25% of a whole house that you could see that is here, and here, and here, and here, isn't like 25% of one portion of it? So if it was 25% of one portion of it, of a house, let's just say, you know, a wing of the house showed, because that's the way they built it on the land, I would think that that might come before the planning commission as being too visible. Would that, in any case? I mean, we've seen a lot of homes like that, so that's fine. What happens? Is there a caveat to that? Is there, at some point, you say, well, if it was spread across...
So I guess we'd go back, and I did look back, and the visible, the 25% visibility is for any visible, for a visible elevation. So we'd be looking at the elevation as a whole. And you could have multiple elevations that were visible from either one single platform or from two different platforms theoretically. So that's what we'd be looking at. If it met the threshold of the 25%, that's not something that we necessarily bring to the planning commission at this point. So that's where we are, and I can't think of any in the last 15-plus years where that's been so close that we've raised that question. It's just some recent projects where that's come up.
Okay. But then, but we did have a trigger, obviously, and we had a process, and, you know, so the number did do something...
Yes.
...to bring it to our attention. Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
One thing, I think, which would be helpful, is where we view it from. Because we have heard some people say, using a viewing platform, because that's where it's defined, it doesn't always work, and I think that's true. So the 25% is one way to look at it, but is 25% when viewed from where? So if somebody comes in and makes the case that, yes, from that viewing platform, it's 10%, but if you walk down 50 feet, it's 50%, you know, I think that ought to be paid attention to. So I think, what I'd like to make sure is that whoever it is, and I think one of the draft in here says the decision-maker, and I don't think that's the right way to go, because I don't think the decision-maker, in our case, is the planning commission, somebody shouldn't have to wait until they come before the planning commission to find out where the thing should be viewed from. So I think that's more of a staff decision. But I think you aren't locked into 25% as an arbitrar, well, it is an arbitrary number, but you aren't locked into it, except to the extent that wherever it's viewed from is deemed to be the right place or a reasonable place to view it. And as long as we have that flexibility, and maybe, and we should have that flexibility, I don't feel bad about the 25%.
So is there a comment back from staff? Because I know we've discussed this, there, you know, we've got the set, what, four viewing platforms?
Correct.
And then we have this number five.
Correct.
Would you clarify that?
So as we evolve our review, and in light of some recent decisions, there have been instances specifically where you go 150 feet or something, one direction or another, where that becomes visible. And so that's where the analysis for those homes were done, and they'll be back before you shortly. The other, to your deciding body comment, at the first meeting, we changed that to community development director to address that concern. I think the challenge gets to be, from a vantage point perspective, how far, what's that distance? I mean, are we going up and down Los Gatos Boulevard, because there's a viewing platform on the Boulevard, up and down Blossom Hill, because there's a viewing platform on Blossom Hill, up and down Main Street, up and down Highway 9? So it's, from the arbitrary perspective, the vantage points, depending on whether that's valley floor or, and/or in the hillsides, I think is a little different conversation. But I think we definitely are trying to take a fresh look at that, and make sure that, you know, if there's a possibility in a reasonable distance from the actual viewing platform where it's visible, that's where we'd be asking folks to look at that.
One argument ought to be that the viewing platform is presumed to be the right place, except to the extent that, based upon reasonable evidence, it can be seen that some vantage point, you know, bearing some proximity to that viewing platform, is in fact a better viewing. So that issue could either be raised by staff or by a citizen, saying, well, that's great, but, you know, you're looking at this sign right there, and you can't see through the sign. If you went 50 feet to the left, boy, then you could see it. So I think, as long as staff has that flexibility, then I don't feel bad about that. The other question you're raising, I guess, because we heard that tonight, is what does it mean from the valley floor, when in fact, some people are saying, yeah, but you might be on undulating hills, and some guy that's in the bottom of the undulating hill is looking up at the guys above him? We haven't gotten into that. I think we're talking about the valley floor being basically where we presently have our viewing platforms. And as long as you have flexibility on the vantage point, I don't feel so bad about just staying with something that I don't have enough evidence to change.
We do have that flexibility.
Commissioner Badami?
I was going to point out to Commissioner O'Donnell, which was already explained by Joel Paulson, that on the staff report, page 2, dated October 21st, 2015, they do address that as item number five, that other locations, as deemed appropriate by the community development director. So I hope that provides you that comfort, because it does for me.
So are we comfortable then with the idea of our view platforms, and at least from the valley floor? I'm not talking about it for up in the hills, but I know that was one of the topics that I had listed for us. And then that falls back to what we were just discussing. Nobody has really said, I have a substantial reason to change the 25%. Commissioner O'Donnell said, well, what does that mean? Is that from the view platform? So I'm hearing my fellow commissioners say, I don't see any reason to change this 25%. And it's 25% from the view platforms or at the discretion of the community development director, if within that range, there's another viewing point. Am I hearing my fellow commissioners correctly?
Yeah, you are. And I think also, you know, any residents that live around, they know where to come. I mean, that's part of it, too. Yeah, to raise the issue. So I'm comfortable, especially because staff understands, they've been here long enough, right, some of them, that, you know, we can move that viewing platform, they understand the question. Now, I don't know if we need to put that in any kind of further language, though. That's my only thought. Do we need to put something in about that? You know, just so we are clear about why we kept the 25%? So we're not guessing in 20 years where that come from, and why is it still here?
No, I think we'll have, you know, this will live on for quite some time on video. And we'll have verbatim minutes when it goes to council, and they'll have the same conversation as well. So I think we'll have plenty of record of that long after.
But would you, but could there be some language crafted around this? Well, I understand that, but I mean, do we need to craft it any clearer?
I don't think so. I mean, I think it gets back to Commissioner O'Donnell's comment that, you know, the 25 number is what it is. Sounds like generally, people are comfortable with that, with the viewing platform language as it, that's proposed, and then we'll, you know, that will be...
And, you know, really, it is the extreme, and we would hope that that wouldn't happen often. So that's, you know, that's a caution I would hope that we put out there somewhere. Thank you.
So in 11 years, when it's you two, and Mr. Paulson, Joel will have the verbatim minutes of this meeting to share. So this then brings us to the next one, which is number two on the top of this list. Should the visibility calculations also consider the square footage of the elevation that is visible? Right. This rolled a little bit into, I think, what Commissioner Badami was bringing up, I believe. The response from staff is the current and staff, current and staff-proposed methodology will use the square footage of elevations that are visible from the viewing platforms, and as we understand now, there's a bit of flexibility with number five, to calculate the visibility that is currently required. It should be noted that visible homes are limited, visible homes are limited to a height of 18 feet. Therefore, an 18-foot-tall home with an elevation that is 100% visible would comply. I know Commissioner O'Donnell brought this up earlier, so do you want to talk further on this?
I think I said previously, I don't like that, and I have not changed my position.
Do you have a proposal on perhaps changing that wording, or what you would like to see?
I would like to see it apply to any home. Now, Mr. Paulson could write, but it seems to me that everybody should try to be building a home up there. Now, this is not very visible, we're using a very arbitrary number. Using a very arbitrary number, 25%. I don't see why it makes a difference if it's a small home. And I don't see why a small home couldn't also comply with these regulations as well as a large home.
And so I just offer that it complies technically. That does not take away the planning commission, or council, or staff's discretion to say, this is a very visible home, so maybe 18 feet, or the sighting with the T, isn't appropriate, and to look at those possibilities.
You're saying it's technical, but we're, are we addressing whether we can change that? Is it technical only because of what we're trying to interpret, right?
Well, the 25% deals with the visibility, the 18-foot, which I think we're talking about earlier, which crossed over into the LRV component as well. But, you know, an 18, I understand your comment is that if you have an 18-foot-tall house that has a 100-foot elevation that's completely visible from the valley floor, that that 18 feet may not be restrictive enough. They may need to look at other opportunities to either put that in another location in the site, or look for areas that where it'd be more screened.
Yeah, some sites just don't work. And that's not our, as long as the law itself is a reasonable law, it is not our problem to deal with your land problems. So I am, yes, I think I just agree with what you just said.
Right. And I would just add that the commission or the town council would continue to have all of its land use discretion, so you could still deal with the mass and bulk and overall size of a home, independent of this visibility analysis issue.
But let's assume that you would otherwise be satisfied with all that. But from a viewing platform or a vantage point, it stands out like a sore, a small sore thumb.
Right.
I wouldn't want somebody to be able to say, well, golly, you specifically told us that if it's this height or whatever, by and large, we're okay on that one issue. And I...
No, and that's what I'm trying to reinforce, is that you retain your full land use discretion to say, the real issue isn't visibility or not, the real issue is that the house is too big for the site, and within the least development restrictive area, that you have your ability to say, make this house smaller. So the visibility analysis has a purpose in terms of the height of the structure, but that's just one component. You still have all the other issues to deal with.
What I'm trying to find out is, have I given away that one issue? Forget the fact that I've got all the other issues. You're telling me that I've got all these other issues, that's great. I'm saying, have I given away the other? What if I want to say, I don't like your house because it's quite visible from down there, and they say, oh, wait a minute, we're under, we're only a single story, we're 18 feet? Heck with you. You don't get to turn me down because it's visible. That's what I'm asking you.
Let's look, we'll look at the guidelines, because I think the overall purposes, intent of the guidelines is to minimize impact to the hillsides. And I think that's really the frame of reference. So what we're trying to do tonight is really determine what methodology makes sense for the visibility determination. But that doesn't preclude the council or the commission from all the other guidelines that are in this document.
And I was just going to comment that that is what the intent of the hillside design guidelines is, is to prevent visibility.
Right.
At 18 feet, I don't care what it is. It's, if you see it, you see it, fix it, right?
And I think in the vision statement, it, you know, it talks about that the vision of Los Gatos, that this natural asset be preserved by ensuring that any development in hillside areas, and it has a list, and the last one's protects and preserves view sheds, is part of that statement.
And I guess I can involve our lawyer. If you draft something that says, you're okay here, don't forget, you've got all these other things, and we've got these wonderful statements about how God is good, and the country is wonderful, we can get you on those, why are we doing that? I'm just saying, why do we have that exception? Why don't we say, if you're visible from the valley floor, I don't care how big you are, you have to comply with the same rules everybody else complies with? Why do we have an exception? Because you're a single story?
It's not an exception, it's a requirement.
It's an exception from the visibility rule that we just went over. You say no, then, fine, but let's get rid of this one-story thing.
Yeah, I think it's, we might, our words, I guess, first, let me just say, I think one of the statements in our staff report might be a little bit misleading. So the visibility analysis helps us to determine the maximum height of the building. That's just one issue, as you know, being commissioners, of all the issues you consider when considering a brand-new home in the hillsides. I think where we probably need to clarify is in the middle of page three of the staff report, is that an 18-foot home, 18-foot-tall home with an elevation that's 100% visible would comply with this portion of the hillside and development guidelines. So rather than the blanket statement that therefore you comply with the entirety of the guidelines, I think we were just trying, our intention was to be very specific, but I can appreciate how the commission might see that as a very broad declaration, which we apologize if that's throwing you off.
So I'm going to just ask a quick clarifying, just so I understand. So the way that I would interpret that is, that last line, 18-foot-tall home with an elevation, blah, 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 complies with the visibility portion, period. However, it must also comply with the list of other, and if it doesn't, it's coming here. Okay. Commissioner Badami, then Commissioner Hanson.
I'd just like to point out that Exhibit 7, as provided by Lee Quintana, she added a suggestion in here to clarify the discretion of the planning commission and the town council, that clarify or clearly state that whatever language is adopted regarding visibility and the visibility analysis, that meeting the criteria is not a guarantee that the project will be approved. So we might want to consider adding that in as part of our recommendation.
I guess we just offer, that's true of every application, but if we want to add...
And what was suggested is fairly clear. You're saying it satisfies that portion, which says that there are other portions that you have to satisfy. I agree with what Commissioner Badami said, and what was submitted to us, I'm just not sure it's necessary in light of the words that are being suggested to be added. But I'm not fighting against it.
Commissioner Hanson?
I don't know if there's a resolution for this, but I wonder if the intent and purpose of the hillside design guidelines was for there to be any homes that were 100% visible. I think I'm agreeing. And so I'm still struggling with that, even with the discretion and that sort of thing. So I, it seems like a loophole in the process. And do we have homes that are 100% visible, especially since these guidelines were put together?
I can't recall any off the top of my head that are 100% visible, but clearly, there've been homes that are visible. You guys have seen a couple of them where they've requested exceptions to height. You guys have seen a couple of them where they've requested exceptions to height, where they were already visible, and many of those were already existing houses where they were doing additions or the existing home was visible and they're tearing it down and it goes up on Aztec Ridge and they wanted an exception for a tower element.
Well, and so I, I, that still makes me feel uncomfortable, that there, that there's a loophole for something to be that visible when we have all these, the statements of intent in the guidelines to not let that happen. But I don't know what the answer would be, I don't know what the answer would be other than to rely on the rest of the development process or had, have something additionally in there that said, in no event could a house be more than X visible regardless. But I don't know what that X would be.
Commissioner Badami?
Well, I believe that's our purpose as a planning commission and that's our role is to address discretionary items and make judgment on them. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a planning commission unless we had issues like this come before us.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
This is the last time we're going to beat this horse, but I, that's what I was trying to say earlier. That is to say, why do we have the exception for the 18-foot house? The bad example of that is the 100%, it's okay from that one point. That wouldn't satisfy me. I don't see any reason why, because it's an 18-foot house, being 100% visible is okay from that position. I would like to say it isn't. I would like to say no house up there should be greater visibility. I mean, I'd stay with 25%, very frankly, unless somebody can make a case that that doesn't apply. So that, that conceptual issue is not solved by the language suggested. I can live with it, but it seems to me it's a fairly, this is your example of about 100% visible, and I don't, if that's the case, I don't know why we're doing that.
So I guess one example would be if you had that case where you had an 18-foot home and it was 100% visible and you were not able to move the home, you couldn't shrink it, you couldn't do anything, it was, just didn't have screening, then it would be a taking because basically you're preventing them from putting any structure on. So maybe we can craft some language in that exception, but that's where I would be worried is, is if you've got a lot that just is completely visible, there's no screening on it, maybe there's no trees and it's going to be seen from the valley forward and it's a legal lot, are you saying he can't build it all?
No, I'm saying we have discretion, just as you talked about having higher and all that. If somebody came in and said, this is one lot in Los Gatos and we want to build this house that otherwise is small, it's 18 feet high, but doggone it, it's 50% visible. They might make the case that you're making and if we can't build anything here, we're going to send you a bill for the lot. And we might say, tell you what, we're going to make an exception, you got to plant, the screen, and here's how you plant it, all these kinds of things. I'm not saying we're trying to prevent people from at all building, but I am saying, I don't know why there should be a general exception saying, if it's the 18-foot house, then 100% is fine. That seems to be the reverse of saying, if you have an unusual hardship, we can deal with it. And I personally would rather say that than to say, 100% is okay, but we can look at height and mass and all that stuff. So I agree with, with Commissioner Hanson.
So with that discussion then, Ms. Prevede, is there a way we could look at the wording?
I think what we can do is look at the guidelines and see if there are other provisions. I think the spirit of this conversation's been very good and it's clear that what we're trying to do is, you know, there's the visibility analysis part of it, but then there's also the other objectives of minimizing visibility, period. And so to the extent screening, new screening or other conditions could be added, we can just either check through the guidelines, maybe not right now, but see if there's already language in there. And then as your recommendation goes to council, we can remind the council that those opportunities exist. If it doesn't exist, that could be another recommendation from this commission to the council to make sure that other efforts are undertaken to minimize overall visibility.
Could I, I don't know if this is an appropriate question, but what exactly were, were, was the staff hoping to get from that question from us? Was, I mean, obviously, are we, are we missing something on this? I mean, was the question, you asked the question, so I, and I'm not sure.
This was a question from Dr. Weisman and Ms. Quintana's letter. So we pulled that forward.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, number three is the idea of, should all, should the all-important visibility calculations be peer-reviewed by an outside source? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I would like to resist making applications too expensive in general. On the other hand, there may be exceptions when you do need peer review. But I would like staff in considering the application and all that kind of thing to at least take an educated view as to whether it's going to run in trouble. And if it's going to run into trouble, then they ought to have the right to say, look, we want you to get an independent party to review this. That might then save the applicant some money of having done by their person. But it wouldn't mean that everybody have to do that. I mean, some have got to be easy. And so if, if staff had some discretion, I would like to make it as inexpensive as possible for the applicant. So on most of these cases, I would think you could say, fine, this is not going to be controversial, submit yours, your stuff. But it's always subject to the fact that if we get a report from you and it just doesn't hold water, we're going to tell you, you need a third party. Or going in, you know, it's a controversial thing, maybe either because you think it's questionable or because you anticipate the community thinking it is difficult. In which case, I think you want to be able to say to the applicant, don't bother to get your own unless you want to do it, that's fine, but we want to get a third-party, independent evaluation. So that would be my suggestion.
And we can, we do that with some of our other peer-review consultants currently, the arborist, traffic, where they can either, they can prepare their own arborist report and have it peer-reviewed by our arborist, where they can provide the funds to the town and our arborist prepares the, the report, which isn't peer-reviewed. So I guess we just need to look into what those consultants are and then send out an RFP so we have someone on call in those few instances where that, that may come up.
I would, I would, I would agree with that. I, I think that that's probably, many times, these outside consultants have helped us make our decisions and enlightened us in ways that, you know, that I feel are, you know, not prejudiced at all. So I think that's a, I would agree with that. I think that's a fair idea.
All right. If we're all in agreement on that, that was the list of questions that were here, but I would like to ask, it's a lengthy document, there was a lot of points brought up by Dr. Weisman, Ms. Quintana, do, does anyone have other discussion points that we would like to make sure that we include on any type of a recommendation that we send to the council?
I'm just bringing up the one that, from Michael Kane, at the, at the end of his letter, for what it's worth, it says, and I'm not sure that this is the appropriate meaning for that, because this has been pretty specific to, to topics, but he just said, and I think he's referring to the fact that if we're in review of, of a document, that's what I'm thinking anyway, he said, we should take another look at the provisions regarding garages, cellars, and language could be more specific about houses stepping down the hillside. But.
I think it's closing statement that that's not really what's before us now and maybe that's part of the.
And that was my, and that was my opening statement.
Yeah.
But I just, so I didn't know if, do we put that on a parking lot?
Exactly. Anyone have any other comments or does anyone want to form a recommendation to council based on this discussion?
Sure. What was it? How do we make that? Well, I think that I, I would make a, I would like to make a motion that we forward a recommendation to town council for approval and, and also the extra comments that were made here tonight. Or not, not approval, but just to forward this on, right? With any comments? What am I?
It's a recommendation for approval.
Yeah, for approval, okay. Of amendments to chapter two and chapter, well, chapter five, we already did chapter two. Of, oh, okay, this is, this is chapter two, of the hillside development standards and guidelines. And I could, there's, I can make the findings that there's no possibility that this project will have a significant impact on the environment. Therefore, the project is not subject to California Environmental Quality Act, section 15061B3, review for exception, exhibit one. Do I, am I missing something? Yes?
So I don't know if this is necessary. I've been taking notes on all of these items.
Sure. And so has staff, and I can go through some of the consensus points that would be added to that.
Can you do it?
And then any that I may miss, either Ms. Prevede or Chair Birch can go into those. So I think the first was that there was consensus on requiring a deed restriction and making sure that we had the trees, the tree numbers identified in that deed restriction and making sure that the replacement was, you know, not necessarily a replacement of the full canopy of that tree, but it wasn't also a five-gallon tree. So some reasonable.
Should we put another number on that?
Well, I think it's going to depend on the.
Should it be 48 box or something?
I think it's going to depend on the size of the tree that's providing the screening because you may have some smaller trees. And so I think it would depend on the size of tree. And so we would look at that.
Okay.
I think there was, there was consensus on not including trees that are in the poor or poor fair category. Those could not be included. The other was that we should get a peer-review consultant, and so in those certain instances, that we should have that option when staff determines that, when the community development director determines that that's necessary.
Also, the vantage points? Is that?
But that's already in the, in the document.
That's already in there, that's right.
So we don't need to add anything there.
That's already in there.
And so I don't know if you had a couple additional ones, Chair Birch?
The only other one I, I had, which maybe is just a note to staff, was on the question number two, which was a discussion point about the 18-foot-tall home, that you're going to go back and review the existing guidelines and ensure that there is some kind of wording that reflects that the goal of the commission and the council is not to have 100% visible home.
Thank you.
Aside from that, I think, because the sparse canopies, we actually already do include in our analysis, right? And we don't at this point require a visibility analysis be done at a specific time of the year. So we agreed with the guidelines.
Correct.
Okay. So.
Do we want it?
I guess the records will simply reflect that on item number four, the lower four numbers, we decided that it didn't have to be done at a specific time of year. So.
We wouldn't carry that forward, that's why I didn't include that.
Right, okay. I just want to be sure that was clear. Okay.
So I will second the motion. Is there any other discussion or questions before we vote? Commissioner Hanson?
I just wanted to ask a question. So, so as I, just to make sure I understand what we're voting for. So we had this draft language from the October 21st meeting and I was looking at that, and that's, that's to be added to the existing hillside design guidelines. And then on top of that, the comments that we made on the, the questions, if it required being carried forward are also going to go along with it, but there isn't necessarily any change to the written language that you have proposed at this point in time.
Correct, other than the things that will be added for the direction. So we will include those in staff's originally proposed methodology.
Okay. All right. Well, all in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. So do we have a report from the Director of Community Development?
I will handle the report. Last night, the council had a meeting and they discussed three items that are relevant for the planning commission. The first was a story pole exception request for the proposed plan development application at 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard, which is the used Honda site where Edison Wine Depot currently is. The town council did end up granting an exception to the duration of time that the story poles need to go up. They granted an exception to allow the story poles to be installed for 10 days, working with the school calendars, trying to work those around, either the winter break or the spring break timeframe, whichever was going to be closer to when that was going to come to planning commission. So that was granted. The second item was they also adopted a new outdoor seating policy. I would definitely recommend that anybody interested in that on the commission go to the website and look at the staff report. And that policy, there was one minor change in a desk item relating to whether or not chairs and tables or heaters and things like that needed to be pulled in when they're in the public right-of-way in the evening. It's, it's a first step in a much longer conversation that the council is going to continue to have relating to outdoor seating, but allowing folks to do outdoor seating both on private property and public property if they go through a permitting process, but at this time, not increasing or changing the allowed number of seats that they have on their CUP. So they still would have to maintain the same number of seats that they were approved with the conditional use permit. The third item was the cottage food industry, home occupation ordinance that the commission looked at a few months ago. They introduced that ordinance. And so the second reading will be at their December 15th meeting. And so assuming that's adopted, that will go into effect 30 days following that. And that concludes the staff's report.
Thank you. Do we have any other commission matters? Seeing none, meeting's adjourned.